I'd like to call to order the Iowa City City Council's regular formal meeting for May 15, 2018. I guess I should do the item one first. Call to order, roll call please.
Bachway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. I want to make a brief comment and it's really going to be my own. I'm very conscious that the Immigration and Enforcement Agency conducted a raid at a particular facility in Mount Pleasant that resulted in the arrest of maybe 30 or so employees. I don't want to comment on that. They were certainly doing what they're legally empowered to do. But what I do want to comment on is the trauma that produced among the families associated with the people who were arrested. And I just want to acknowledge that that trauma happened. And I feel grief for the families who were directly affected and people who are directly related to them. And I think it's not what, not the way we would have proceeded, but we're not the agency involved and we have no control over how a particular federal agency enforces federal law. But I did want to make that opening comment. So now, item two, Student Leadership Awards. From Robert Lucas Elementary School, we have three awardees, Simon Alvarado, Malay Lacy, and Sarah Sanders. I bet they're in the room. Come on up, please. All right, so let me come over here and get between all you good folks. So this is the most exciting moment of the evening. It's the one that Pauline Taylor, my fellow councilperson, enjoys the most, for good reason, because we see happy parents in the audience and I think, you know, we're on TV too, so there are happy people out there in Iowa City land enjoying what they see and having an opportunity to celebrate with you the good work that you've been doing. So, we have three awards here. They all say exactly the same thing. And I'll read the award statements after you read your speeches. You each brought your speeches, didn't you? All right, so we could begin with Malay, okay? So, let me scoot over here. So, I'm going to hold this and you can say whatever you want to say.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Malay Lacy and I show positive leadership at Lucas Elementary by reading to younger children each day. I play for, I play volleyball for Iowa Rockets and for basketball, I play for Thunder. I, oh my God. I study taekwondo for Choche's Black Belt Academy and I have a temporary black belt right now. And, I can't think. Mr. Mercunis awarded me to a STEM program that lasts for a week in Loyola University and I will be attending that this summer. And I would like to thank my parents for all their love, sacrifice, and support they give for me this year. Thank you.
Great. Beautiful done. Well done. I can tell you, you're the first person who's spoken without a written speech in her hand or his hand in the, what, six-plus years I've been on the council. So, well done. Okay, so, Sarah, you're going to be next, all right? So, do you have a speech?
Hello, my name is Sarah Sanders. I have been a student at Lucas Elementary for seven years. I would like to thank the city council for this honor and my teacher, Ms. Dostal, for nominating me. My teachers give all students many opportunities to demonstrate leadership while at Lucas I participated in Peace Builders Student Council, Reading Buddies, Helping the First Graders and Congratulations with Reading, Earth Club, and Safety Patrol. Thank you again for this honor.
I thought I heard a city councilman cheering over here.
Great job.
Okay, Simon, you're next.
Okay. Hello, my name is Solomon Alvarado. This award means a lot to me. Thank you for recognizing me as a good citizen. I think I am a good citizen in the classroom because I am never late and always turning in my work on time. I always participate in class discussions or raise my hand during the class to help out or to answer a question. Another example of how I am an excellent citizen is in my family. In my family, I always take care of my brother by helping him by when he needs or being in charge of him. In conclusion, I am a good citizen because I like to take care of things or be in charge. Thank you for this award.
All right. All right, we'll be able to turn to you and we need somebody to be in charge. That's great. Okay, so, let me read these, read these awards. They say exactly the same thing except your own individual name appears here. So, Student Leadership Award, "For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Robert Lucas Elementary as well as the community and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others." We recognize Malay, Simon, and Sarah, thank you. "As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, May 2018." So...
Please, yes.
You probably don't want that sticker. And I think this should be yours. Can you take that and take that sticker out of there? I run out of hands, so this one's yours. Okay. There you go. All right, so I bet there's some happy parents out there and you're doing a great job. You should be very proud of your kids. Well done. Yeah. All right, so, you're on to enjoy the rest of the night. Item three, Proclamations. We have a proclamation called Kids to Parks Day, but I don't think there's anyone here to accept this proclamation, so I will not read it. And then we have National Police Week. All right, "Whereas in 1962, President John Kennedy set aside this week to pay tribute to the law enforcement officers of this nation and to memorialize those who have fallen in the line of duty. And whereas the police officers and their support staff in Iowa City work with courage and dedication to enforce the laws fairly, to reduce crime and violence, and in general to improve the quality of life for everyone in this community. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career often face unknown or extraordinary risk and danger in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas these women and men are fathers and mothers, sisters and brothers, sons and daughters, and so we give gratitude to their families for supporting them in their career. And whereas officers of the Iowa City Police Department play a growing role as ones who promote harmony and mutual respect among citizens in an increasingly diverse population. And whereas, as we wish to give everyone an opportunity to appreciate and thank the men and women of the Iowa City Police Department who dedicate their lives to public service, now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through 19, 2018, to be National Police Week in Iowa City and urge all citizens to participate fully in this observance." Is there anyone here who could accept this proclamation? No speech? I wasn't sure if I was going to get cued or not. It's new to me. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I will tell you that the officers of the Iowa City Police Department and across the state of Iowa really depend on the support of their city councils and the community at large. And proclamations like this really seal that for us, that we know that folks support us in our daily work and in the event that we do suffer a loss protecting our community in the line of duty, that they're also there for the families as well. So important, so we appreciate it. And I'll bring this back and we'll display it proudly. So, thank you. Steve.
Chief, could you maybe just, for the audience, there were a few of us here earlier today, talk about the event here in the chambers earlier today and what three of your officers are off doing, working or vacationing on their bikes on the East Coast?
Sure. So, today we honored the, well, actually, our police chaplains honored us for National Police Memorial Day. And that makes, because it falls on May 15th of every year, this National Police Memorial Week. So during this time, is a time to reflect, a time to recognize and have ceremonial events to honor those who have passed before us. And again, also the families. So, this week in particular in Washington DC, at the National Memorial Museum, there are tens of thousands of people there that are doing ceremonies. And we have three officers there represented. And one of the things that they participated in this week was the Police Unity Ride. And that ride consists of a bicycle ride through several states. It's kind of a rag bribe on steroids, if you will. As a matter of fact, our officer said, "This is kind of easy because we're rag briars. We know how to do this." And other ones were suffering, trying to get up the hills. But this event is 2,500 riders. It rides through several states to Washington DC. And it's expected to raise $2.6 million for the memorial and for the museum in Washington DC. So it's a big event. And just today, as I watched the president giving the speech in front of the US Capitol for the memorial, our captain Troy Kelsey was shooting me pictures because he's there and so it was kind of cool to see that he's actually at that event. So, a great event today with our chaplains honoring us was a great event. I had to read my speech, so I'm impressed that she didn't have to. I'm one of those. But we really appreciated that today and we do it every year. So, next May 15th, the public's welcome. It'll be 11:00 AM right in this place again, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. All right, next is, what is this, National Public Works Week. "Whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated National Public Works Week since 1960. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Iowa City. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas it is in the public interest for Iowa City community members, business owners, community leaders, and youth to gain an understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their daily lives. Now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 to May 26, 2018, to be National Public Works Week in the city of Iowa City. And I call upon community members, business leaders, and community organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing and maintaining our public works infrastructure and to recognize the contributions that our public works professionals make every day to our health and welfare." Is there anybody named Ron Kenaki here who could accept a proclamation?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you on behalf of our 170 employees in our Public Works Department and this recognition. As a part of National Public Works Week, each of our national APWA recognizes 10 individuals as the top 10 Public Works Leaders of the Year. And this year, Rick Foss has been named one of those top 10 winners. And so, the Iowa Chapter will be hosting a reception for Rick next Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Big Grove Brewery. So you're all more than welcome to come and attend that. It is a great honor for Rick and it's another great honor for our community and for our state. This will be, I think, our fifth top 10 winner from the state of Iowa in the past five years, so we've been doing very well, so...
So there's 10 in the nation that are honored?
Yes, top, yeah, 10 in the nation. So, you know, we have 30,000 members in APWA nationally, so it's a great honor for Rick and we're happy for him, so, thank you.
So, Ron, for people who are watching on TV or somehow don't know this, Rick Foss is a long time, was a longtime employee of the city of Iowa City and a longtime director of our Department of Public Works. So, we're very proud of Rick and it's great news, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, item four, Consider Adoption of a Consent Calendar as Presented or Amended?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Bachway, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Kingsley, something you wanted to bring up?
Well, Mize, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to talk about item 4D1. Yes, I'm going to come around like various items here. One of them is 4D1, about the Iowa City, you know, Fire Department Strategic Plan. You know, the strategy three of the diversity part of the plan is to promote recruitment of men and women of diverse backgrounds. I guess so that's really, you know, I like this very much and I support it, the Fire Department effort to achieve greater diversity in our firefighters. This is great. And the second one will be, yes, item 4D10. Because I was reading, I don't know if, you know, you say like, "Or, a citizen specifically requests that any of the item be considered separately." This item will be removed and considered later on the agenda. Is this something new or always was there?
This just provides us with a little more flexibility, Eleanor, could you?
No, that provision of it has always been there, though.
It's always been there? I saw this as an awesome idea. I wasn't know about it, that's why I thought, you know, I can just mention it so for the public to know they can also do that. And, yes, very brief for item 4E1, the University, University sale for the 717 East Davenport Street. I know the price is $165,000, but I would love to know like, if Jeff know how many bedroom there?
One second.
It was small. I thought it was two bedroom, 900 square feet, I think.
900 square feet? I forget what it was, that's fine.
Two bedroom, one bathroom, 960 square feet.
I just want to comment on that, really $165,000 for two bedroom is way expensive. And we're talking about affordable housing here. It still, the question will remain, affordable to whom? I think we should look into that. You know, I have a personal experience, is looking for a house and I know what the market look like and I understand this is not affordable. Maybe you can talk about it later. The last one is 4F2, which is the Arshid Green Law Income Housing. For the, I'm referring to the letter that being sent. Yeah, and also, again, you know, I like the idea of like having, like building affordable housing for elderly people. But as you all received this letter and read it, for a single bedroom, 650 for the rent, it could be affordable, yeah, and, but in the real life, it also, the question can remain, affordable to whom? We need to include everyone when we're thinking about affordable housing. I know it's made to be affordable and 650 somehow affordable, but still, the question's again, affordable to whom? And this is great example, the letters that we have received. We are not including everybody. University City sale, certain people, also elderly housing, certain income. We really need to get in the way of how we do, how we think about affordable housing and affordable to whom.
Is that it, Mize?
I guess that's it, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to briefly comment on 4E5. And just, this is associated with the project, my notes are now everywhere, the project to four to three lane conversion, or, yeah, four to three lane conversion of Mormon Trek. I'm going to support this project, however, here are my points of concern. We received a low road grade and that wasn't necessarily focused on casualties, which we've discussed as a value on council. Obviously, I have value as far as preserving life as well. But a large part of this grading is due to traffic. So for me, it's ultimately supporting a low assessment. I understand that it conflicts with our council value related to safety intertwined with speed collision. But again, I have some concerns with this arterial street going from four to three lanes and the traffic that it would cause. All the studies we reviewed speak to wanting and desire to stop traffic flow. I know that, again, we have asked our representatives at the city level to provide for more information as it provides, or as we look at safety and want to have additional safety components. But I do feel like there, because there's a happy medium where we can look at safety but also look at traffic flow. Because I would say, in regards to that safety component, I'm not necessarily there yet. I think that with, what was used before was an example of how Dodge Street is a three lane road. And I can tell you, going to work every day, coming into Dodge Street is awful. I mean, it's terrible from that perspective. And actually, just today, there was almost an accident waiting to happen as you come out of the Hy-Vee gas station where somebody was trying to butt in because there's just so much traffic. My concern is with the change from four to three lane, is that we're just talking about, you know, individual business, you know, workers coming into work. In Mormon Trek, we're not only talking about arterial street where there's people coming into work, we're also talking about a highly trafficked street which has about two, three, two schools in that particular area and a major high school. And I know that you know that I'm a speed demon, but I would guarantee you that some of our students leave me in the dust. And so in thinking about how traffic flow is associated with speed and ultimately younger age drivers driving and wanting to get to class on time and workers wanting to get to class on time, I'll be looking at and wanting to make sure that we review those safety statistics that we valued to make sure that we don't see an uptick or cause for concerns from that standpoint. I am, I will say though, I'm in favor of the turn lane because that's an awful area to turn. And so in general, I just wanted to say I'm supportive of the project. I think we've talked about this before, but I did want to highlight it because, I mean, I used to live on the west side. Neighbors that I had previously and also people I've talked to have expressed considerable concern. They did not feel comfortable coming to council because, again, they don't want to be a proponent as has, as is how it's been described of not wanting safety. But I do think as we deliberate and look at this as a potential, I wouldn't say pilot, but in a sense pilot project to review what this looks like for our arterial street, I do want to make sure that we have those considerations in mind and that when we think about this four lane to three lane conversion, it does matter for different areas of our town.
What are you going to talk about?
This. Can they talk about this now, too?
Well, I'm going to interrupt, Pauline, only because of this. For the public's knowledge, what we are doing with item 4E5 is scheduling a public hearing on request for bids concerning the Mormon Trek Boulevard four lane to three lane conversion project. So, we strongly would encourage people who have strong opinions about that conversion from four to three lanes to come, speak, express your views, and we'll consider what you have to say and then we will vote on it. But that's going to take place two weeks from now, on the 29th of May. Please, if you wanted to add, go ahead.
The mayor, thinking about it, it's more kind of a point of clarification, I think. Jeff, I've talked to you about this. The, I'm not so concerned about the right turn onto Benton, but I, my neighbors have been talking about and where I've only seen traffic congestion is trying to turn the southbound traffic trying to turn left onto Benton. And I didn't see that in here again, but I would hope that that would also be in the proposal, that there needs to be that left turn onto Benton with a light. And then also the concerns about that convenience store slash gas station that has the two entrance exits, that's just not going to work with that.
So, at the public hearing on the 29th, we'll have the public works directors or the city engineer come and present and overview the project and we can get detailed on that intersection analysis and why we landed on the plans that we have. And if you've got questions or concerns with those, you know, that's the point, to express those and either delay the project and instruct us to move forward with some different changes or move forward based on our rationale.
Do we have, refresh my memory, do we have traffic counts for Mormon Trek?
Sure, yes, we do.
Good, good.
Yeah, if you recall, there's some state funding in this project and that state funding was predicated on a safety analysis. And so there's a lot of good data that supports the rationale behind the project.
I'd like to note two other items that concern roads that are on our consent calendar. Item 4D2 is an asphalt resurfacing project for Governor and parts of Burlington Street. It's authorizing a contract with a particular firm to do that asphalt resurfacing. So that's going to be a lengthy, it's going to cover a large part of Governor Street and, I don't know, two or three blocks of Burlington Street. So that's going to happen. Item 4D5 is a resolution authorizing a contract with a firm to provide engineering services for the design of Macaulster Boulevard from South Gilbert to South Sycamore. And I know that quite a few people who live on the south side of Iowa City have wanted that road to be built, so we're, you know, taking the first major step in that direction. Item 4E3 has nothing to do with roads, but we are scheduling a public hearing, May 29, again, on request for bids concerning the Creekside Park Improvement Project. And I'm pretty sure that people who live out near Creekside Park, I don't know if there are any around here, will really enjoy seeing the work done. All right, any further discussion about the consent calendar?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Bachway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, 7-0. Item 5, Community Comment. Anyone who would like to address any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda should feel free to come up and speak to us now. It has to be a topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda. And please take not more, state your name and take not more than five minutes, please.
Linda McGuire, and I'm here just to report to the council, a donation that the north side neighbors made to the Iowa City Parks and Recreation Foundation today. There was a yard sale, a neighborhood yard sale, and we had agreed that some of our proceeds would go to, back to the city for your generosity or for your vote anyway, of the upgrade to Happy Hollow Park. And so, there was a bake sale and a yard sale and some other generous donators and we made a contribution of $10,575 today.
Bravo.
Okay.
Good news. Anybody else have any good news to offer?
Top that.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone else. So we'll turn to item six, planning and zoning matters. Item 6A, rezoning Camp Cardinal Boulevard and Deer Creek Road, The Grove. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 7.84 acres from interim development, research development park, IDRP zone, to planned development overlay, low density multifamily, OPD slash RM12 zone, located west of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and east of Deer Creek Road. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Bob McO. Hi.
Hello. Would like to start off showing you the location of the property. As noted, it's on the west side of Camp Cardinal Boulevard. It's east of Deer Creek Road and also east of Highway 218. Here's a photograph of the property as viewed from the intersection of Deer Creek Road and Camp Cardinal Boulevard. And note the trees on, on this photograph. I'll, I'll talk about those in a, in a bit. And this is a photo taken from Deer Creek Road looking east towards the, the property. And then this photo is taken from Camp Cardinal Boulevard looking south towards the property. And again, those trees on the, on the left are part of the plan, part of the plan is to preserve those. You might also note the pond just behind the car. I'll, I'll discuss that in, in a bit. This is a photo looking from Deer Creek Road or from the property back towards Highway 218, which is, is west of the property. The comprehensive plan for this area refers to the Deer Creek, or excuse me, the Camp Cardinal Boulevard master plan, which talks about conservation design in this particular area. The plan speaks about the possibility of, of office park as a, as the first land use adjacent to Highway 218, and then that transitioning to residential. The idea being the office might serve as a buffer between the highway and the residential. But a, a previous version of a comprehensive plan talked about the difficulty or the lack of demand for office in this part of the city, so questioned whether office was a viable use here. The Planning and Zoning Commission, to address the concern about a buffer between Highway 218 and this property, did recommend approval of the plan that includes a greater setback from the western property line, and that setback area, or that buffer area, according to the plan, will be planted with a variety of trees, including evergreens and deciduous. The conditional zoning agreement calls for the city forester to approve that plan so that it is, is designed to help create a buffer. The conditional zoning agreement also calls for approval of a sound mitigation plan to be prepared by an acoustical engineer prior to a, a building permit. And it's anticipated that that plan will include things such as laminate windows and sound mitigating materials such as masonry and stone on the exterior of the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended that the, the project include some outdoor usable open space, so there were four deck areas added to the plan. I'm sorry, the cursor isn't showing those, but they're on the north side of the property along the, the fire access road, and there are four individual outdoor deck areas that overlook the pond. The decks and pond areas are somewhat shielded from the highway by the, the slope of, of the land, and also the, the buildings that are proposed will, will help shield those. Here are some illustrations of the, the photos, which show that they will be a, a combination of, of a masonry or stone and a, a wood or like siding material. The plan also includes a pre-preservation plan for the, the woodlands along Camp Cardinal Boulevard, and this is a view of the east side of the property, which shows the woodlands. Most of those woodlands will be preserved as part of this plan. I believe approximately 55% of the woodlands on the property will be preserved. Planning and Zoning Commission, after several meetings and reviewing different variations of the plan, have recommended approval with the conditional zoning agreement, and those conditions are intended to help create a buffer between the highway and the, and the building and all, these buildings, and also have a building design that is appropriate for what the commission thought was a major entry to the, the city of Iowa City. Happy to try to answer any questions.
Bob, when it comes to the design standards, my understanding that was kind of one of the big issues in, in the delays with planning and zoning. My concern is developers and their architects put in a lot of time and money to come up with designs based on the standards that we have in place. I guess my question is, do you, do you think we need to change those designs, those design standards? Do we need to have different design standards for different locations, like entries into the city? It seems like, it seems like we have developers and their architects trying to design to what we have in place, and then P&amp;Z is saying that that's not good enough. And I'm, I'm trying not to be critical of either one, because I'm not saying those higher designs aren't good and beneficial for the community, but I think it's always difficult if you lay out one set of standards and then you tell people after they've spent tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars that that's now not good enough for this particular location because it's an entry into the city. And so I'm just interested in your perspective on that.
Sure, in terms, in terms of my view or the staff's view, I think in most cases the design standards are, are adequate and do produce appropriate designs for their locations. And this particular location, planning and zoning was concerned because the proposal was to add or to grant some waivers to allow taller buildings in, in this particular area. They also recognized this as being a fairly difficult site, the way that it's wedged in between the highway and Camp Cardinal Boulevard. Also, the, recognizing the, the importance of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and the beauty of that, that street and, and the, the character of that street, they thought that there needed to be a, a, a close scrutiny to the design of these buildings. And that's how this particular design came about.
Thank you.
I couldn't tell from the maps, is there a sidewalk that children can use to walk up to Borlaug School?
It's a fairly extensive, of course, there is the sidewalk on Camp Cardinal Boulevard. There will be a sidewalk that goes up Deer Creek Road to provide access to the buildings with an internal walkway system. And then there's also a walkway that will go back towards the, the fire lane in the back of the building to provide access to the outdoor recreational areas. This is, the code generally requires a sidewalk to a public street, but given the top, the topography here, that would be quite difficult and would result in more grading and removal of trees. So it was felt that this design was probably a better approach, even though it's a fairly long way for a pedestrian to get back to the sidewalk in Camp Cardinal Boulevard. It was felt that was better than cutting into the slopes and the, the woodlands along there.
So Bob, the, the sidewalk along the west side is not continuous, correct? I mean, it only goes as far as this project?
It goes to the entry of, of the development. And the, the reason for that is, in the long term, we anticipate that Deer Creek Road will likely be abandoned or vacated north of this property. Other than this property, the only property served by Deer Creek Road is the quarry, and the thought is when that quarry closes sometime in the future, that road will no longer be necessary.
So pedestrians or bicyclists would walk or ride their bike back to Camp Cardinal, correct?
Correct.
And currently, there is no continuous sidewalk along the west side of Camp Cardinal?
No, but there will, as development occurs, there will be one built. And you may recall, within the past year, we did approve a subdivision just to the north of this, and that will bring the sidewalk. And then there's one more phase of that development, which will complete the sidewalk on the west side.
So until those pieces are in place, pedestrians and bicyclists will have, have, well, maybe not bicy, well, I guess bicyclists as well, will have to cross Camp Cardinal, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Could you clarify, Bob, the, the size of the units? I was thinking, I was reading that one and two bedroom units. That doesn't sound like, like family units to me.
It's my understanding that they will be one and two bedroom units. There are 110 total, and the, and the parking is set up for one and, and two bedroom units. It would be possible that they could introduce three bedroom units, because the parking requirement is the same for one and two. In terms of, other than parking, in terms of zoning, we generally don't get into the number of, of bedrooms. So it's possible that developer could add three bedroom units if they chose.
Thank you, Bob. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. No, before I do that, I want to, sorry, I want to ask you whether you are inclined to vote consistently with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the rezoning?
They certainly gave this a lot of thought. It seemed like they deferred it several times and continue to get further information on it.
All right, so, given that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Botchway, second by Mims. Discussion.
I really like this development. What I love about the path that we're on, especially on our west side, is we're getting some very nice density. I mean, you're talking about 110 units multifamily. It's close to other large, single family houses, which we want them only to be that, but it's a nice mix of incomes. I like the design. I think I understand where your concern is, Susan, they want to make sure that we're not making the developers have to modify too much. But that said, it seemed like it was a really healthy process, thoughtful process that P&amp;Z engaged in to get a real targeted concept for the spot, so I think it's a great development.
My only concern, Rockne, is it may have been a really healthy process for P&amp;Z, but when it happens this way, it tends to be a very expensive process
I understand that.
for developers. And when we talk about trying to make things as affordable as possible, when they spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars on design, and then our design standards aren't sufficient, and, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't have been better in this location. I'm not trying to criticize this particular one, I'm trying to talk about our process. And if we need higher standards, then we should develop higher standards. Otherwise, to me, if developers come in with something that meets our standards, then that shouldn't be, shouldn't be a factor in the rezoning. It should be, what is, what is the appropriate land use, not what is the design. Otherwise, we need to look at our design standards.
I'd say you raise an important point, Susan, but I would look at it quite differently. It seems to me, on the face of it, this is not a good site for residential development. Now, why do I say that? Because there are two heavily traveled roads very close by. That means it's going to be, unless something's done, it's going to be very noisy, there's going to be a substantial amount of small particle, particulate matter coming from the roadway traffic, probably roadway dust of all types, and so on. So it seems to me that the commission did exactly what we would want them to do, which is to make the initial proposal much better than it was at the start. And yes, I agree that there's some cost associated with that, I recognize that, but it was needed. And I, I think the project somehow, in some sort of ideal world, could be a lot better or different, but I really admire the energy and intelligence that our commissioners put into this project and the way they just worked their, their way through it and identified what they thought were the most important community values that needed to be articulated in the final proposal, and they got to a point where they could vote seven to nothing in favor of it.
But see, what I would say again, from a process standpoint, then, is maybe we need different design standards. One of the comments that they made repeatedly was, this is an entryway into Iowa City, and one of the first things that people see. So my question is, do we, should we have different design standards for sites that are on entryways into the community? If this is, if we are doing multifamily and major development near high volume, high traffic volume roads, should we have different design standards? Again, to me, it comes back to the process where we tell people that these are the design standards, but then they get into the middle of it and we tell them, for very good reasons, no, we want it different. It costs them a lot more money. I think in those cases, we need to go back and say, okay, one set of design standards isn't good enough for the community. You know, we, maybe we need to have different sets of design standards based on other externalities for the sites. Entry into the community, traffic volumes within a certain distance, et cetera. That's my point.
Yeah, interesting point. I just follow up on one part of it. I think you're drawing attention to the importance of context and how context, in many cases, should largely influence the design of structures, and that may be sort of forgotten or omitted in our codes.
I agree with what you're saying, Mayor, but I agree with Rockne also, that it's great to see the west side developing. But I think, Susan, there was more to P&amp;Z's concerns than just the design standards. I mean, I, I'm really concerned, I read several times that it's a challenging property, and Bob himself said something, it's a fairly difficult site, and it's just sort of this unusual site. And I keep wondering, are we just throwing developments into any sort of green space that's available just to put something there? I mean, why can't we just leave with the green space? Why is it so important that we develop it? Because it is challenging. It's, it's so close to 218, and I just can't imagine, I think someone had written that, that they live on the west side and hear traffic, and I do too, and I live half a mile away from it, and I, I can hear it, especially if my windows are open, and the fumes, and you're talking about having green space and patios, and are people really going to sit out there when you've got the fumes and, and the noise? I, I just don't think, I don't think so. So I think there was more to it than, than the design standards, and yes, that was a big part of it. Then that comes back to land use. Right. That's true. Not design standards.
Anyone else?
I, yeah, this was an interesting one to, to look at. We had, by my count, 68 pages of documentation covering the, the seven meetings of planning and zoning. So there really was an extended process, four formal meetings, three work sessions. And, you know, as, as we've heard on our discussion here, I, I think some of the issues seem to be that the applicant was looking at an effective variance on the setbacks off the interstate, and planning and zoning was just challenging, whether that was an appropriate thing to do, given the impacts of, of such a variance. One thing I've emphasized for some period is, is the idea of what's sometimes referred to as usable open space. That was another issue that carried over on a number of those, those P&amp;Z meetings. I would certainly support looking at, because I do think, Susan, if, if an issue recurs on application after application, it may be that we do need to look at revising our plans, and I know we have usable open space in certain parts of Iowa City, riverfront crossings is one example. I certainly believe sociability, especially when you're talking about 110 units, in a relatively isolated location, you know, where you do not have access to parks, or schools for that matter, I think Borlaug is about a mile away, that you, the need for onsite gathering spaces and outdoor spaces becomes more critical. And that was incorporated into the plan. I think it was cited in a good location away from the highway, facing the, the detention pond. detention pond. So I think, I think the conversations that were held at those meetings were productive, but they were extended. But this was a challenging site.
I just want to give like big shout to the planning and zoning and all the hard work they have done and the thing that they have to go through to make this project really look good. As Rockne said, I really like the three multifamily buildings with 110 units. That's really will increase, you know, the locust housing in general and try to solve some housing crisis. That's really good. I'm very proud about this project. But also, as Susan said, maybe to make even the planning and zoning job a little easier, if we can also review those, you know, requirement, so they can make their job easy.
Yeah, I would agree. I appreciate what the Planning and Zoning Commission did. I mean, it made my job easier for seeing all that deliberation and ultimately answering a lot of questions for me, you know, that I ultimately have to kind of, you know, jump out of body sometimes to make sure I'm thinking of the particular council perspectives. I usually throw out John's in relation to trees or open space. And so having that conversation beforehand provided a lot of the answers for me that just made it a lot easier to make a decision on. I do agree with Susan's point, though, and we brought this up, or I may have brought this up during strategic planning session, or one of those lines, is that, you know, this property was tough. And so I'm thinking more in general, as we think about the range of topics tonight even. We may want to consider some type of evaluative process, and we may currently have one in place towards our designers or developers, just to know from an evaluative standpoint what the process looks like. Is this, is this an open process? Do you feel comfortable with this process? I just think it would be important to get some of that feedback before we may make potential changes or have some different conversations as far as design criteria, because I've been hearing that a lot, and I want to make sure that we can look at some of that information. But supportive of the project, Maz and Rockne already mentioned the fact that it's multi, a number of different units. I think there's been some concerns, Pauline, I know you brought up some concern necessarily related to this site, but some other sites that we've talked about in the Camp Cardinal area that had some different range of options. But I would say this one I like because of the number of units and the density that can provide, you know, more affordable options, particularly in this neighborhood, which I just have some concerns about related to affordability. So excited.
Any other comment? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
No?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Throgmorton and a negative.
Should have said no.
All right. Item 6B, rezoning between Burlington and Court Street, Pentagon Garden Apartments. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 3.41 acres from high-density multifamily residential RM44 zone to Riverfront Crossing, South Downtown Subdistrict, RFCSD Zone, located at 12 East Court Street. I'll open the public hearing.
As noted, this property is located between Burlington and Court Street. It's east of Madison and west of Clinton Street. It is the site of the Pentagon Garden Apartments, which were built as an urban renewal project back in the 1970s. As part of that project, Capitol Street was vacated by the city and closed to traffic, although a view corridor was retained for views of the old Capitol. This is a photo of the current state of the property. Capitol Street to the south, or ends at this point, it previously continued on to the north. And if these trees weren't here, you'd be able to see the old Capitol in this photo. This is a photo from the intersection of Capitol Street and Burlington looking south, showing the existing buildings on the property. The proposed rezoning will allow this property to develop at a more dense, mid-to-high-rise type of development. That development was contemplated and planned for in the downtown and Riverfront Crossings' master plan. The plan specifically identified this property as appropriate for higher-density, possibly student housing, given its location close to the campus. The plan also called, or calls for the reopening of Capitol Street as a street carrying traffic. The applicant has agreed to a conditional zoning agreement, which would provide for the rededication of right-of-way for the opening of Capitol Street, and also has agreed to build the street to the specifications approved by the city engineer for the street. They have submitted a concept plan showing it as a two-lane street with parking on both sides. This is very conceptual in nature. It's likely that the actual plan would include turn lanes at the intersection with Burlington Street. It's also possible that there'll be some sort of driveway to the eastern part of the development from Capitol Street, and that may be necessary, just given the topography and grade. It would be difficult to achieve underground parking by coming from the east, and we would not want another curb cut on Burlington or Court Street. So therefore, it's highly likely that there'll be some sort of traffic on this street. The Form-Based Code that would be applied with the Riverfront Crossings Zone would or will allow an eight-story, or eight-story buildings on these properties. And I would point out that this concept doesn't show the, an actual building design. It just shows the potential maximum footprint. The Form-Based Code will require that there be some building articulation and step backs to break up the mass of the building. As noted, up to eight stories could be built under the Form-Based Code. There is the possibility of additional bonus heights that could be approved by the staff Form-Based Review Committee. And up to additional, an additional five stories could be approved under a Level Two review, which is a city council-level review. So the maximum that would potentially occur here would be 15-story buildings, and that would require that the plan come back to you for your approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about approving a potential high-density, high-rise building, or set of buildings on this property, without seeing at least a concept plan. So they've recommended that a conditional zoning agreement require that the future plans for these two sites or this property come back to them for review and approval. And again, if Level Two review is required, those plans would also, or in that case, Planning and Zoning Commission would be making a recommendation, but you as the council would have ultimate approval of those designs. And I would note that, based on the intentions of the current owner and potential developer, they are anticipating larger buildings that would require council review. The Form-Based Code does require usable open space based on bedroom, bedroom count, and the applicant has indicated that they plan to do that on rooftop terraces and perhaps some of the lower and as well as some of the higher levels of the building. They have submitted this illustration or photograph of the type of building that they contemplate and how they might satisfy that open space requirement. But again, this is just a photograph of another building. It's the type of building they would like to build here, although a specific building hasn't been designed. There is a conditional zoning agreement that they, that does contain the conditions I mentioned regarding reopening of Capitol Street and review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also improving the, or installing the streetscape improvements for Court Street and Burlington Street. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Bob?
I'm Decker. I'm the project manager for the owner. Just really quick, as Bob mentioned, he did a really good job of saying most of the things I was going to say, but obviously, this is already in the regulating plan, and it's the South Downtown Subdistrict, and we're just asking for the, really, the formality of rezoning this, so that we can get to the next step where the intention is to provide you with a, with a project packet where the team is putting together conceptual elevation, streetscape looks, and go through the process of getting things in front of you for urban renewal. And as he said, the Form-Based Code Committee, so that we can really bring this back to you and can do all the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission was asking for. And that's the full intent of the owner, to do that, and probably one, maybe even more additional meetings, so, through Planning and Zoning and you guys as well. So I just wanted to state that again.
Is it really just a cost issue that we can't get it now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's that, and that is, it is such a high-level, it's such a high-level project that the, not high-level project, but high level of quality, it's such a massive scale, that those processes are so early in the, he just wants to sort of get this through as a formality, so that he can kind of get on to the next steps and really, and start to sort of spitball what those things are going to look like, right? Knowing full well that that is going to result in everybody looking at it again. So, and you're correct. I mean, that's the primary, that's the primary function. It's very similar to what you were talking about in the previous issue, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right, so I need to ask you whether you are inclined to vote in accordance with the commission's recommendation. And before you indicate, I want to tell you what I believe. I am inclined to oppose the rezoning, unless something else happens in the interim. I think this application is premature and insufficient. I worry that by approving this rezoning, we would in effect be authorizing an unknown number of residences in perhaps just two large buildings of unknown height. This is our one chance to have a significant influence on the project. To wait for the moment when we review the final design for height bonus approval, I think is far too late in the process. We'd find ourselves in an awkward position of perhaps disagreeing with our staff, perhaps disagreeing with the developer, and then pretending that we know more than our staff does, et cetera. I don't want to find ourselves in that position. I strongly believe that we need to have, before rezoning this property, a much more precise understanding of what the developer would like to do on the property. And, you know, in terms of height, number of buildings, streetscape elements, I don't know, a variety of things like that. In turn, I think it would be fair for us to indicate to the developer what we think the project needs in order to gain our approval. So I have some preliminary thoughts, but we can skip them for the moment anyhow. I think, given what I just said, it would be very helpful for us and for the developer to dedicate a work session to this proposal, much like we did with regard to the Forest View Comp Plan Amendment and the design of Augusta Place, so that we get interaction between the developer and us, and can share our various perspectives and get a, something that the developer can feel confident we would approve. So that's my view at the moment, and I'm very curious to know what you think, not so much about my view, but about what your own view is and so on, with regard to my basic question, do you support what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended?
I do. And the reason I do, you know, the city went through a whole long process of shirets in terms of developing the Riverfront Crossings area, getting the Form-Based Code in place. The city even took the initiative to rezone property in the Riverfront Crossings area without the application of property owners. We took that initiative. Property owners didn't oppose it, but they didn't have to ask for it. We went ahead and did it because we really wanted to try and jump-start some of that development down there, which we felt was incredibly valuable to the city as a whole, to vitalizing that area south of Burlington. What this property owner is asking for at this point in time is nothing more than rezoning from the current to the Riverfront Crossing zoning, okay? Which is what we have said we want, south of Burlington. That has been what this council has said through many iterations of rezonings, the shirets, which hundreds of members of this community were involved in. There are ample opportunities, and I think Bob listed those very clearly in terms of what the developer and property owner will have to come back for if they want anything more than eight stories. I think that's very clear to them, that, you know, they've got eight stories. If they want the two extra, they've got to get approval at staff level for that design. If they want to go past the two bonus to anything potentially, an additional five, if they wanted to go that high, but anything above those two bonus, they have to come to council, okay? And so we have that opportunity. I think to sit here and say, oh, but we need to have that now, or we're basically telling them it's all okay, these are smart people. They get it. They know what it's going to take to get this done. And to ask them to literally put hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is what I've heard from other developers, out right now for designs, when, and we wouldn't, and we won't even rezone it to the zoning that we want, without them doing that, I think is really, really disingenuous from this council. I think we owe them the opportunity to get this rezoned Riverfront Crossings, and then have staff and P&amp;Z, and it sounds like ultimately the council, working with them as they go forward to get the designs that are satisfactory for this location.
I appreciate your comments, Susan, but I'm inclined to go along with the mayor's comments. I'm just really uncomfortable with too many unknowns with this proposal, and I think we need to be cautious about approving anything at this point. This is a very significant location in the downtown area, and there's, there are many historical landmarks. The county courthouse is nearby, the old Capitol is nearby, and to dwarf those things with tall buildings, I just, I, there's just, we don't know how tall they're going to go and
Nothing over eight without staff and/or council approval.
Even eight, I think, is tall for this area, but I know it's
That is what Riverfront Crossings
I know it's in the Riverfront Crossings, but if we rezonate to Riverfront Crossings. But that's just my opinion.
I guess I don't, I can't sit here and understand, from a council perspective, when we've had hundreds of people go through shirets and develop this Riverfront Crossing and develop Form-Based Code, and all we are doing tonight is talking about land use. We are not talking about design that will come back to us. This was approved as appropriate land use for south of Burlington through incredible public input. And I think it's an incredible disservice to a property owner to say, oh, yeah, we did it then, but we're not going to do it now until you give us every last bit of design, which ultimately, they're going to have to do if they want any bonus on it.
It's important to note that many developers have already deviated from the Riverfront Crossings plan several times with our authorization.
With authorization.
But they had to come to us to deviate from the plan. So the plan, for example, the area where we were going to have a large square between a railroad station and the other railroad track to the south, is not there anymore. And moreover, we did, when we approved the Form-Based Code, we did not know that a 15-story student housing structure would be built at Court and Lynn Street. So we built into the Form-Based Code an up-to-five-story bonus for student housing, up to five stories. But we didn't know this other building was going to be constructed, and then there, now there it is. It's going up. So I think those factors need to be taken into account as well.
But, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Bob, can you come back up? Is this appropriate? Just kind of walk me through the process again, as far as how it's coming back to us?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Can you just walk us, I mean, so right now, as Susan has mentioned Can you just walk us, I mean, so right now, as Susan has mentioned, we're focused on the rezoning to Riverfront Crossings, I'm just more focused on how this is going to come back to us and our potential objections or approvals at each of those junctures.
As drafted with the conditional zoning agreement, any development on this site will require approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Anything above eight floors or eight stories will require awarding of bonus points, and those would require, or those would be reviewed by the staff, Form-Based Committee, as well as planning and zoning. Anything above that will require council approval. So anything above 10 stories automatically requires council approval for those bonus floors, and during that process, the council can weigh into the design or can determine that those bonus provisions or floors aren't appropriate, and therefore not approve the design or negotiate something through that process. I would like to point out that, just for your information, we did rezone a large area surrounding this to Riverfront Crossings, the city initiated that. We did not include this particular property for one reason, and that is wanting to have the ability to negotiate the reopening of Capitol Street, and that's what's part of this recommendation from staff and Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's being fulfilled with this conditional zoning agreement.
Bob, before you leave, oh, before you leave, again, I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at it, but ultimately, when does it come back to us? You talked about if it's to go to 10 stories, it automatically gets council approval, but what are the two, when would it come back to us?
Yep, if there's a proposal to build more than 10 stories, it would require this, the design come back to the city council.
But I think the other key thing Bob just said is, any design has to be approved by P&amp;Z, that was part of the conditional zoning agreement.
It has to be seen by P&amp;Z. Did they say they have to approve it?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that's what the conditional zoning agreement says.
All right, that's important to know.
I just want to ask you how high, just remind me about the Riverfront Crossing, how high we can go, they can go, I mean?
Depends on the area.
These, for this particular property, the zone contemplates up to 15 floors. There will also have to be federal aviation approval, given the airport.
The airport.
So, and I think that's where we came up with the 15-floor cap. It can't be more than 15 floors under any circumstances. It may actually be a little bit less based on FAA concerns, but it's, we believe that approximately 15 floors will be possible on this property.
Bob, can you go back to the clearer, more clearer pictures of the street? Because I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I know the property, but, just to make sure I'm looking at it right.
This is the view from Burlington.
No, no, not that one, the one you just passed.
The aerial.
The aerial, yeah, that one. So is there a building, what's the building going on, going, happening right here? There's a bill, oh, sorry, I'm just pointing at the screen and I... I thought everybody knew, I thought everybody knew. So in between, on Madison, between Burlington and Court Street, there's a building going up right there.
Yes, yes.
What's the size of that building?
I'm not sure the exact number, it's quite a tall building, and it did, I believe...
I see eight fingers up in the back.
Eight, is it eight?
Eight.
Sounds like eight.
Okay, that's why I wanted, I wanted to kind of understand the juxtaposition.
And you said, they can't build up to it without coming back to the council?
That's correct. One possibility that you may consider is adding a condition to the conditional zoning agreement that any building just, would have to come back to both planning and zoning and council. That may give the developer enough assurance that they have the zoning in place to do at least an eight-story building and, and address your concerns about future review.
Eleanor, is that a, do we defer and then come back, or?
You'd have to continue the public hearing and then communicate with the developer about whether that was agreeable to them or not, and then...
Defer.
Because the conditional zoning agreement has to be signed before the close of the public...
That sounds like a possible pathway to me, Bob, thanks for suggesting it. I want to make sure everybody understands, I am not saying I disagree with what the developer has in mind, what I'm, what I am saying is I have no idea what the developer has in mind, and I'm also saying that if we have, if the only place where we could exert any influence over the final design is the moment when the developer says, "I want to go more than, give a density bonus of, or height bonus of greater than two stories," then by that time it would have been too late. All we could do is vote yes or no, we couldn't influence, we would not be able to influence the design.
I think that's a flaw, if that's what the council wants to get to, then it's a flaw in our process. I mean, it wouldn't just apply to this property, because the whole idea of Riverfront Crossings is a massive upzoning. So if you want design review per view at a, at a lower threshold than you have now, which is that level-two design review, then I think you're talking a much bigger process or evaluation for design requirements.
This is the most massive site, though, that we'll see. I mean, I don't, but again, I don't know what the developer actually is proposing, so I don't want to exaggerate too much.
I think the fact that they have agreed for P&amp;Z to have the right to review it, I think is, I think that's quite a concession on the part of the developers, and I think we should give, you know, credit to P&amp;Z, look at, look at the one we just talked about, and how much they went through on this Camp Cardinal project, and the demands and review and stuff they did there. I think, I think it behooves us as council members to give some, some credit and respect to P&amp;Z in terms of what they're doing, and the CZA says P&amp;Z has to approve the design. Even at, even at eight stories, they have to approve the design.
Yeah, I mean, this is a significant project, I mean, I'm inclined to be supportive just in thinking of the other building that's built, whatever that west or east is, sorry.
West.
West, a west of the property. I do hear the concerns, but I also, I do also hear Jeff's statement about how deep in the weeds are we talking about going, and are we treating all properties favorably? And I understand your point, Jim, as far as this is a more sizable project than other projects that we have considered. So I would say, I like Bob's, whoa, whoa, I thought you disappeared, sorry.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I was just, staff is not necessarily recommending that, we had recommended approval, planning and, using the Form-Based Code to guide the future development of this property. Planning and zoning add the condition about planning and zoning review, I was just putting out a possible path, but staff is not necessarily endorsing, including council review.
So I would, so I appreciate that, Bob, because I just, you know, labeled you as coming up with the idea, so I'll take the idea. Basically, I would like to see us to, I mean, defer, leave the public hearing open, defer. I'm not necessarily at Jim's level, but I do, I mean, I'm hoping that we can come up with a happy medium from a language perspective, reach out to the developer. I just don't want to lose on a project because we have some concerns. I would like to see us try to come to some common ground as far as potentially what we may see in this project, and again, going back to what we previously talked about, cost and everything else, I just, I think we could wait on this, if possible, so we don't have a no vote in this particular situation.
I just want to add a couple of other thoughts on this, and why I tend to support the idea of deferral, some of which relate to the context of this project. It's immediately east of our new school of music, it's just north of the county courthouse, it's, what runs through it is Capitol Street, which is on axis with Old Capitol. It's a very significant north-south axis in terms of the city's structure. Jim mentioned the fact that we lost a significant piece of our comp plan in Riverfront Crossings with the loss of that large park space to the south, which suggests to me maybe rethinking, or at least exploring other concepts for Capitol itself. Maybe it's a pedestrian street, it's not a public right-of-way where we treat it more as a conventional street with auto traffic. We have the example of Anne Cleary Walkway on the north, which is on Capitol, the same street that we're referring to, which I think has been a very successful model for, for Capitol, north of Old Capitol Building. So there seem to be, this is a very important site, I think there are a lot of issues that come to play with it. The images that are shown, and I understand these are just images, but these are the images that were presented, and they're, I must say, they kind of throw me a little bit, you know, we have the experience of the rise, that's in complete compliance with our Form-Based Code, and I'm not hearing a real strong, you know, in my conversations with residents, that that feels like it's, you know, resolved all the issues through their Form-Based coding. So I'm hesitant to sign off, even at the, a very preliminary level in terms of the, you know, the moving to the Riverfront Crossings Code, when it seems to me there's some very foundational elements that are still, I think, requiring further discussion before we do that.
Eleanor, go ahead. Go ahead.
For me, I really prefer to defer it than to vote no for it, because, you know, the concept of Riverfront Crossing, as Susan said, is like to give the chance to be able to build high, but also the Form-Based Code and all those kind of things, and also, as, you know, our mayor said, we don't know what the, and the, we don't know the plan for the, you know, the developer, what they have in mind. Maybe we can defer it and ask, you know, the developer to come and tell us about what they planning to do here, so we can, after that, we can just make us, make our mind.
Along those lines, Eleanor, if we deferred it, would we have the authority to do a work session with the developer, or not? How does that work? What options we would have if we would defer it?
Well, you can schedule a meeting, a work session with the developer, if that's what you wanted to do, but I think, I suggested continuation, if you want to add a condition to the conditional zoning agreement, that would be the purpose of a continuance. If you do want to do that, then I think we should be clear about what that is now, so we don't, so we can say to the developer, this will, if we add, and it's a very simple amendment, we would say, it now says obtain approval of the exterior design elevations from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we would just add, and, city council. Is that going to satisfy you with respect to design review? Mm-hmm.
I think you need...
Go ahead.
I'm hearing a couple of different things here. I think you need to focus in and decide, is this a design review issue? Because if it is, I think the suggestion that Bob laid out, if you want more control over that, then I think that's probably the way to go. What I'm hearing is not just a design review, it's a issue with the comprehensive plan, that, you know, what the developer's essentially saying is, we're going to do what the comprehensive plan says, we're going to, we're going to dedicate Capitol Street to the city, and we're going to do two long linear buildings around, along Capitol Street, which is what the plan contemplated. If there's concerns about lack of open space, or the height of buildings around the courthouse, or any of those other things that have been articulated, that gets back to the plan, and I think you need to have a discussion, you need to move aside this issue, and you need to have a discussion of what you want from that plan. If, if eight stories is uncomfortable, or 15 stories is uncomfortable, that seems to be a bigger, bigger issue. I think the design review piece is rather simple, you get a look at it when it comes back. Keep in mind that the space right now is RM44, it's our most dense district right now. I haven't asked our staff to look at this, but I don't know if it's built to the maximum that it could be now, but if we don't want the Riverfront Crossings District, we have to make sure that we're okay with the RM44 District, and whether this property stays as it is, I'm sure it's a profitable property, or if it gets redeveloped under that district, and we potentially lose out on Capitol, or any of the other things that we were trying to get through the Riverfront Crossings Plan.
I would at least, if we have the authority to do it, I would like to defer and have a work session for a conversation. If we have the authority to do that, that's what I'd like to do. I'll just say, for me, I don't have a problem with eight stories, I don't have a problem with that, at least at this point, but I would like to have more of a conversation about what the intent is. I understand the costs are extremely, in terms of the actual design, that's extremely expensive, I totally get that, but I think the very technical term of spitballing was used, and I think in terms of having this conversation, we can at least have a conversation about what the aspirations are. I don't intend to get into the weeds, I think we didn't get into the weeds with the Augusta Place, they gave us a little bit of, that was farther along, I admit that, but I think even in terms of, I don't know where they got this photo, but if there are other photos that they have in terms of at least aspirationally, I think that would help me guide my decision-making in terms of sort of where we are, so, that's at least what I'd like to do if we have the authority to do that.
The aspirations of the developers, we understand it, is to maximize density, so I would assume they're going to shoot for the 14, 15 stories, whatever they can, whatever they can get. The owners have, they understand the height bonus provisions, they understand what their options are, they have density from other properties that they can transfer, so I think their, I think their intention is to maximize density within the constraints of the Riverfront Crossings Plan. You know, there's, there's the usable open space provisions, there's the Form-Based Code, which includes setbacks and storefront types of regulations, so, you know, they haven't indicated to us that they want to deviate from that, they want to build to the Form-Based Code standards at the maximum density they can per the, per the plan. They can come in and articulate that at a work session, that's fine, but I think that's what you're going to hear.
You know, I'm having second doubts about this work session idea, though. I mean, we're in the middle of a public hearing. We weren't in the middle of a public hearing when we had a work session with Augusta Place, and that was in connection with the fact that we were providing TIF to that development. So it's, I have some queasiness about continuing a public hearing and then having a work session where the public can't comment. I mean, you can have that conversation with the developer at the continuation of the work session, or the continuation of the public hearing, like you often do.
We might need to do just precisely that. I want to be, try to be clear about a few other things, if I can remember them. I'm not interested in having a discussion with the developer about the details of the exterior design of the buildings themselves. I think that will be handled beautifully by the Form-Based Code, I don't want to be doing Form-Based Code. I am interested in how many buildings they're going to build, how tall the buildings will be, will they be of uniform height, two buildings of uniform height. I am interested in the Capitol Street extension, which I think is a great idea, but I'm interested in discussing whether it should be a pedestrian walkway or a road, so I'm interested in those things. And I'll note also that in the April 16 work session of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mike Hench noted that for a project of this size, hundreds of units collecting rents for 75 years, the applicant should be able to spend the money to have elevation and concept designs drafted. I think some kind of preliminary indication of what they have in mind is necessary for us to do our job. And I'd say also, I have to disagree with you, Jeff, the comprehensive plan, the Riverfront Crossings Plan did not call for two long, tall buildings there. I mean, we had a map that Bob showed us just a little bit ago, showing several maps, and we can't do exactly what that called for. Yeah, so, I wanted to say, make those points. So I think the question is before us, are we inclined to vote in accordance with the commission's recommendation? If not, we need to continue the public hearing and offer to consult with the commission?
You can offer the consult, it's hard for me to believe that if you just want to add council approval of the exterior design, that they're going to, what are you talking about?
I'm not interested in approving the exterior design, I just said that, Eleanor.
No, I understand that. My point is, what is the purpose for continuing the public hearing?
Hopefully...
You've talked about amending the CZA, you've talked about, because you are, aren't going to vote, I don't know how many of you are not inclined to follow the recommendation of P&amp;Z, so it's not for that reason, so...
What I...
I don't know.
As one member of this council would like to see us do... What I, as one member of this council would like to see us do, is have a conversation with the developer about what the developer has in mind, and then we could share our ideas with the developer, and maybe come up with something that a clear majority of us would agree to.
So you want to continue the public hearing and have that conversation on the 29th?
Yes. Yeah.
Then there's not going to be a consult offered to P&amp;Z, so we're simply going to continue it for the purpose of having that conversation with the developer, and to hear from any other members of the public.
Yeah.
At the continuation of the public hearing.
That sounds like what I had in mind, yes.
I'd like to know what other councilors want to hear from the developer.
I do.
No, what do you want to hear from them, is what I'm asking.
I thought you said whether we wanted to hear from them.
No, what you want.
I want to have more of a clear idea as to what he, I'm answering your question, what the proposal's going to look like, more of a conversation. We understand that we have the authority to do this, whether it's called a work session or a public hearing. I would like to have more time to review this, so I would be inclined to move the public hearing.
I guess my concern is, if they have to follow the Form Based Code, Jim, you just indicated you're not interested in getting into the weeds on the exterior design. They can't go over eight stories without P&amp;Z approval. They even have a CZA that is going to require P&amp;Z approval, so.
If I could, they can't build anything without P&amp;Z approval.
Right, I'm sorry, maybe I misstated that. So the CZA says they are going to have, have to have P&amp;Z approval on the design. I just think if we're going to defer this, I think it behooves us to give them specific information, or specific questions that we want answered. I am prepared to move forward on this now. I feel comfortable with the fact that this is going to Riverfront Crossings zoning, which has been approved in so many areas south of Burlington already, some of it at City Initiative, that there is a Form Based Code in place that had, as I've said before, input from hundreds of people, that the design itself has to have P&amp;Z approval, that anything beyond eight stories will have to have additional approval by P&amp;Z, and anything over 10 stories will have to come back to us for design approval. I am comfortable with it. I think there are enough checks and balances between P&amp;Z and us for them to absolutely maximize their density. And quite frankly, I'd really like to hear back from staff, Jeff, of what they can do on this site without it being rezoned. Because we've had this, we've gotten bitten by this once, okay? On First Avenue, we chose not to allow two or three multifamily buildings. I think all of us hoping that the developer would come back with maybe one or two more smaller multifamily buildings. And instead, the developer said, to heck with you guys, I'll just do what current zoning allows me, and now we have about eight curb cuts along there for single-family homes. And I think one of the potentially absolute worst things that could happen to this city is that this property owner and developer says the same thing. I am going to refuse to jump through hoops that are above and beyond what current process really requires, and I will just maximize the density on this site as it is, without any zoning, and the city staff and P&amp;Z and council will have absolutely no say in what I do, in terms of design or anything else. And Capitol Street will not be reopened, and we could end up with the biggest, ugliest situation there than what we could possibly want. I think the developer's being incredibly reasonable in asking for this rezoning, and I think we've got some great checks and balances going forward.
The developer would like to comment, I don't know if you want to allow him to or not.
Yeah, sure, I mean, come up, I just want to make this quick statement, is, well, actually, I'll wait, I'll wait and let you go first.
I wanted to say, I can speak to a lot of the things you guys are asking on behalf of the developer, I just didn't, because in our opinion, it was, that we were seeking more of the formality. It's not a question as to whether developer wants to or can spend the money doing that, he's planning to. He was just planning to do it at the next stage. It's also, I can also tell you that on behalf of the developer, that they are not planning, they want to come back to council, they would, I can speak for them freely, and that they would agree to that wholeheartedly. If that has to be a part of the agreement, they would agree to that. They're intending to do it anyway, they're intending to spend all of the money. It's not that they disagree with doing it now, it's just that we had laid out four phases of this project, and that was Phase Two. With the assumption that, the Riverfront Crossings is already established, those heights and all those things you guys have done a good job breaking down are already established, they're already there, Jeff did a great job of describing that. They're not asking, that, I use the word formality, but they're really seeing it as that, like, can we get through the formality, because they, you did such a good job on the comprehensive plan, let's just tick that off the list so that we can move to, the idea is to provide an entire packet of what this project is, similar to the rise, you guys saw that for the rise, it's a 50 or 60-page color packet of transferring Capitol Street, what the streetscape would look like, for what John said, which is, are we, we've had those discussions with Bob, are we going to do two lanes, are we going to do four, are we going to do parking on the side, are we going to go to Anne Cleary Walkway? Those are things we'll discuss with P&amp;Z, the owner is open to all of them. He doesn't, from my discussions with them, I'm not sure they're really hell-bent on one way or another, I think they're, they just want to get the project done, they want to open up Capitol Street, they want to transfer that right-of-way, that they're 100% agreeable to that, it's a 100-foot right-of-way, not a 66, which I think is a little more typical down there, right? Does that sound correct? So I want to do all those things, we want to get into the, you know, stepping the building back at five stories. We have all those things in our mind, but it's very, very early, and we were just planning to do that at the next stage, and never in our, never in the plan was it to not come back to council. And I think that we, we're able to express that, and I apologize for not saying that earlier, I was just, we were viewing that, Susan's done a great job, it's a very formal, you know, a formality, and we're just trying, assumed this would be a little more straightforward and kind of get to the next step, and maybe that wasn't clear, that that's sort of the intention of the owner. That's why I wanted to speak again, because I heard you guys saying a lot of stuff that I'm able to answer on behalf of the owner, so I hope that's a little more.
Do you think the owner would be willing, you and the owner would be willing to come in two weeks from now and give us a more clear indication of what the owner has in mind?
Sure, I think so, and he may say, you know, if, maybe I'll have you do some renderings now. We're going to do them, so, us and the architectural team, so. I don't want to speak for him, I haven't asked him that question, because I don't think that was the plan, but I don't see that that would be a big, a big problem, continuing the discussion. You know, like I said, the plan has been to do that all along, and that's, that's pretty quick to get some, some pretty, I think we want to do some pretty high-level stuff, but if you guys were just kind of wanting to get a concept, that's what, I know Bob had those same discussions with him too, and that's why he, he kind of picked out some images that were sort of conceptual to what he's, what he's sort of envisioning on that site, right? You've seen the rise, you've seen sort of what that is, and so it's not a big stretch to think that there, somebody's going to want to do something similar to that. I know if you guys, there have been, we've been in discussions with the university too, the university is very interested in this, because it opens up what they're looking at for their parking lot down there that is next to the Johnson County Sheriff, that they have ultimate plans for, and so they're very interested in opening up that corridor too, for student foot traffic, and, and there's a lot of parties involved that want to see something happen here, and the opening of Capitals is key to it, right? That's, that's, that's the biggest piece of this, and I think that's what, they want to transfer that, but they don't have to. You guys, once you started talking about, they might just sit on it and let it go, they've said that, if it's, if it's, and they're not saying it in any kind of, they just, they want to do it, they want to, the zoning makes sense, it seems like it should be a straightforward process, but I don't think they have to do it, it just, it's something they want to do. It's their oldest, I believe it's their oldest property, and so it's kind of a, and John brought it, brought up a great point, you know, it's a corridor to the old Capitol, the sightline, so opening up that, excuse me, opening up that viewpoint would be very, I think, good for everybody.
Good, I think it'd be very fruitful to have that conversation with the developer. So if I'm understanding you correctly, and if I've heard my fellow council members correctly, what we would like to do is continue the public hearing to May 29?
Sure.
In anticipation that you and the developer.
Yep. That's what it'll be, it'll probably be me.
Will come and give us a clearer sense of what the developer has in mind.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would just be sort of an add-on to what, sort of, with some additional, some additional visuals of what you've seen there. I mean, you've heard, 99% of what I just told you is that you just want to, I think you guys are wanting to see more, more of the visual side of it, correct? Kind of how it's going to.
And have, for me, have, speaking for myself, I mean, and have some conversation with the developer about a few things that I would think would be key, like with regard to that extended Capitol Street.
Yep.
You're exactly right, that axis to, north-south axis to the old Capitol Building is hugely important.
Yeah.
For what the university wants to do south of Court Street. But the quality of landscaping, and whether it's a pedestrian walkway or a street, matters.
Yeah, and I know that, I know for a fact that he doesn't have an answer, they don't have an answer for that. And I think that's very deliberate, I think that's because they want to work with the city, and Jeff has probably had some discussions with them, towards, towards the best solution. I don't think they're, you know, focused one direction or another.
The way the CZA is written, it's, it's our call. You know, we will determine whether we want that pedestrian street or a vehicular street, and, you know, we weren't in a position, at least I didn't feel comfortable at this stage, giving that type of, you know, certainty within this rezoning, because frankly, I think it's going to require a lot of discussion with the university, and their future campus plans in the Riverfront Crossings area, and, and what they envision for, you know, the extension of the, potentially the extension of the Anne Cleary Walkway to the south. We need to do some traffic analysis to determine what opening up to vehicular traffic would, would do to that area in the larger Burlington corridor, so I'm just not prepared as, as a staff to say what that should be, but ultimately, I want that call to be the city's call, and have input from the developer, have input from the university, and the greater community, and determine that. And that's what the CZA reflects right now, so we certainly won't, we won't be in a position to let you know what our thoughts are on that by the 29th. That's something that'll take several months to, to think about and to discuss with other stakeholders.
Yeah, let me be clear, so thanks for your input.
You guys got it.
So I think that my, my feeling on deferral was more related to a potential, you know, no to this project. And Susan, I appreciate you bringing up the First Avenue project, because I couldn't think of a project that would come to mind. But ultimately, you know, I am going to go the process route to a certain extent. I mean, for me, I'm comfortable currently where the, where the building stands with the appropriate, you know, code and zoning related to this particular development. I also feel somewhat awkward just recently saying that I really appreciate the deliberation that Planning and Zoning went through, and then I'm going to say, well, the deliberation for Planning and Zoning isn't enough, it needs my added input. Am I saying, you're saying that, I'm saying that's something that I feel like, if I, if I don't go in favor with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and as is worded here, for them to approve the projects, including design review, dedication of the right-of-way, and construction of Capitol Street, I would, I mean, just not, I wouldn't say Jeff was trying to, you know, give me the words from that standpoint, but, you know, there's still a lot more information that has yet to be determined for this project. From a process standpoint, the developer has come with the rezoning, that is potential rezoning, that would, would have a, would have eight, eight stories, and I'm saying this out loud to make sure it's clear, eight stories, and then a height bonus that if we would sit 10, it would come back to council.
More than 10?
More than 10, it would come back to council. If that's the only kind of designation that I'm basing at least the height piece on, I feel comfortable, because we have an eight-story right there, and in general, because of the other Form Based Code, or Riverfront Crossing, sorry, Form Based Code, Riverfront Crossing implications that we have, that will be tied ultimately to this project. I mean, I have additional questions as far as affordable housing and some other things that was discussed, not only in our packet, but also, you know, as far as how we move forward with this, that I have a lot of questions about, but I'm, I am confident that the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, in the same sense that they were able to provide us with, or at least me, I shouldn't say us, me with an easier answer, as it related to open space, as it related to some of these things around that location at Camp Cardinal, I feel like I would be, I feel like I would be, you know, going back and forth, you know? I support Planning and Zoning to be able to think through some of these projects, to be able to provide a project that really, on a tough location, works, and wouldn't be able to do it here. I do feel comfortable with this. And in the event that it comes to a height bonus, I mean, I think we're going to have to have a conversation and discussion with the developer as far as whether or not that's needed in that particular location.
The other thing I would mention too, is just a reminder to council, this is only the first consideration of three. To me, there's no reason we can't close the public hearing, vote first consideration, still ask the developer and representative to come back in two weeks, when we're going to discuss this again as part of our second consideration. We have to vote on this three times before it passes, and so I don't really see why we need to continue this and stretch it out, when we can still get those same answers at our second or third consideration. So I will not support deferring, keeping the public hearing open and deferring.
I'd say the main reason is because these buildings will be here for like 75 years, and they might be 15 stories tall, will radically alter the appearance of the, of the streetscape down by that part.
And you still have a second and third vote that you can vote no.
Yeah, but it's a good reason to continue the public hearing. Anyhow, but the key question is, are there four or more councilpeople in favor of continuing the public hearing, under the anticipation that the developer and Rob will be able to come and speak at our next meeting in more detail?
I support deferring, you know, continue the public hearing.
Let's just get a motion on the floor.
Yeah, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To the effect of what I just said.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Cole, second from Saleh, discussion?
We're talking about two weeks. I know time is money, I know we want to move these projects along, but we are talking about two weeks for an additional conversation, additional feedback, and I'm looking forward to constructive conversation on May 29th. I understand what Susan's position is, but I think a little more time would be helpful.
I do think it brings up a, you know, to that point, Mark, I do think it brings up awkward points, so I appreciate Susan really articulating the first and second consideration. We've done that in other projects where we've, we have waited and said, hey, can you come back before us? I believe it wasn't necessarily to a project, but I believe that when we were focusing on some type of alcohol regulation, we wanted to go before the committee and vote on the first consideration, and ultimately, whenever Jim or staff was able to provide that information back, we knew that we may necess, we signaled to whomever, or at least to us, that we may vote differently based on whatever came back. I'm, I would say I'm inclined more from a first consideration standpoint, if the developer's still willing to do it, I mean, there's no reason to say yay, and then if, you know, the conversation doesn't go as we, we would like, you know, then we, then we vote, you know, differently, so. I would disagree, I think that we should move forward.
Further discussion? I support the deferral. I'm hoping that we can have, or continuation, the, that notion of deliberative dialogue again, a true conversation, rather than, as we saw with the Camp Cardinal project, where, you know, there were comments by P&amp;Z, they conveyed to the applicant, the applicant then came back, you know, and so it was, it ended up being seven exchanges. I'm hoping we can accelerate the, the process by, by having a more deliberative dialogue at that meeting in two weeks, so that we can respond more effectively with one another in a shorter timeframe.
I'm in favor of continuing.
I think I hear four votes.
I'm sorry, I need one clarification, and the direction from the council is no changes to the conditional zoning agreement, is that correct?
At this moment, yes.
Because if there are, that will require another continuation.
Yeah. So at this point, what, any further discussion? No, okay, we need a roll call, right? No, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-2. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second, and by Saleh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks for your patience out there, folks, I know you're here for some other topic. Item 6C, rezoning 1705 Prairie to Shane Road. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.89 acres from plan.
Fair, I'm sorry, we need a motion to defer the first consideration.
Oh, I jumped by that.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Move. Moved by Saleh, second by Taylor, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So back to item 6C, rezoning 1705 Prairie to Shane Road. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.89 acres from planned development overlay, high-density single-family OPD RS12 zone, to low-density multifamily RM12 zone for the property located at 1705 Prairie to Shane Road. The details of the at 1705 Prairie to Shane Road. The details of the conditional zoning agreement have not been worked out, so the public hearing will need to be continued and first consideration deferred until May 29. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Open the public hearing? Oh, open the public hearing?
Move to continue it.
I think maybe, oh, yeah, sorry. Could I have a motion to continue the public?
Hold on a second.
Oh, you're speaking, Charlie. Sorry. Thought you were walking out.
My name is Charlie Eastham. I live at 953 Canton Street. I just wanted to note that for this, this rezoning request involves, actually involves displacing a number of people who are living in mobile homes on this side now. And the developer, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you know, reached an agreement for providing displacement or relocation expenses, I think in the amount of $1,000. I would just like to say that I think that amount is too low, and I think the county, you have plenty of discretion to require a more practical amount of relocation assistance, whether or not HUD displacement-relocation rules are actually used. I know they don't apply here because there's no HUD money involved, but I think the council has plenty of discretion to look at those rules and require whatever amount makes sense and is fair to the people living there.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing to May 29?
And defer first consideration?
And defer first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second, and by somebody down here. No?
Me.
Saleh. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can we move ahead?
Except for correspondence.
No. And we don't, we don't do discussion because we're deferring it, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Item six, item 6D, rezoning, huh?
I'm sorry, we do have correspondence to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Moved by Botchway, second, and by Saleh. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6D, rezoning historic landmark designation, 319 East Bloomington Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 319 East Bloomington Street from Central Business Service CB2 to CB2 with a historic preservation overlay CB2 slash OHP. I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to us?
Hello. Alicia Trimble, Friends of Historic Preservation. Sorry, I've never been able to talk and write. I know I've communicated with some of you recently, but I'm going to ask you for something I rarely ask for. I'm actually going to ask that this landmark nomination be deferred. I've been trying to find some middle ground here. I've met with Joy Smith, one of the owners, as well as Linda McGuire, and have conversations with several other people who live in the North Side. Many of them brought to the point that the house is a much, part of a much larger story in that neighborhood about community and immigration and the vibrant cultures that added to Iowa City history. And there is a lot more that people want to do down in this neighborhood. And I think that by deferring that, that allows for some conversations to take place. There is some interest in finding things that can be done during the OPTICOES studies, such as creating historical markers for which there may be smaller grants for, that could save the city a small amount, but some money when the final projects are done in the North Side marketplace. In the meantime, I'm also working with an instructor of a public history class at the University of Iowa to try and find a project, a semester-long project in the fall for his class to do. He wants them to have a class where they do archival research, or a project where they do archival research. They communicate with a community group, and they take what they've learned throughout the semester, the good and the bad in planning, and try to apply those ideas to developing a neighborhood that would work for a good community center. Sorry, I had this all in my head when you guys started. You guys just have such long meetings.
Thank you.
I think, too, that, I think that there is a real desire in this area for a lot of people to communicate. I think the North Side has always been very good at communicating, actually. There was some concern by some people that they missed those OPTICOES meetings about the North Side. I do know that some of those will be happening again as they continue. But the final project with these students would actually be to come up with different designs that they believe might work. And I think this gives the opportunity for the neighborhood to have a longer discussion on what they'd like to see in that neighborhood. And I think these student projects could actually only serve to provide OPTICOES with more information. I also believe that that's a really unique educational opportunity for those students. This also, you guys know my biggest concern is always the bear-truck scenario. It isn't about trust in this case at all for me. But if this is deferred, that means, instead of asking you to pull the landmark nomination, that if something were to happen in this project, we're suddenly to be in danger again, that you wouldn't have to go through Historic Preservation Commission, P&amp;Z, and then back to you again. That process generally takes months. And I think, I think something good can come out of this. We've had really great successes lately with things like the Unitarian Church. And I'd like to keep the conversation going in this case to see what we can come up with that might make everybody, I don't know, perfectly happy, but a lot more happier than they are now. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. So Bob, were you going to say anything at the start? I mean, you don't have to. I was just, okay.
[laughing]
Chill out. Eleanor, could you please remind us what our guidelines are with regard to deferral?
Sure. You can continue the public hearing. You, there is no, you can continue that for whatever period of time you believe is necessary to accomplish the purpose of the deferral. If you continue it indefinitely, we'll have to schedule, we'll have to just set the public hearing again, because we can't continue a public hearing to an indefinite date. If you do continue, the moratorium on any development activity that would be inconsistent with, with the designation expires on June 1st, or after June 1st it expires. And that could not be put in place again for a year.
That's if, if we continue the public hearing, the moratorium would end anyhow on July 1st or whatever.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so Alicia, I don't know if you knew that.
I did.
Yeah. So it doesn't give us much time. So, I don't want to have a conversation with you out there. I'm sorry, that's wrong.
Can I ask Alicia a question or no?
Yeah. Could you come back up, please?
Yeah. When you're saying you talked to some people over there, like the neighborhood, and you think that if something good will come up, and that's why you would like to be deferred, have you talked to the owner, and you think the owner will really be convinced that's why you want us to defer, or?
I actually had the conversation with Joy before I had the conversation with the instructor. And then I actually did meet with Linda again, but I did, Joy was out of town last week, I believe. So I just think that, you know, this is a really important neighborhood, and, you know, Linda is right, this is only part of a very significant neighborhood. And I think there is a larger conversation to have here about the history of the neighborhood and the other things that, you know, could serve to benefit, you know, the neighborhood as well as be reminders of that history. I think there are ideas for things like historical markers, you know, looking at the history of the neighborhood to inform maybe what type of development might occur in the future. I think those are all really good ideas that, you know, the neighborhood should have the opportunity to express.
Yeah, but that's been, like, all this time, we knew that. We knew all the neighborhood wanted this to be historic, we know that. But my point is, when you're telling me that something good will come out of this, I assume immediately you talk to the owners, and the owners, maybe they're laying toward that side. That's why you need more time to convince them. Is that true?
To convince?
The owner.
I think Joy has her mind made up. I don't think there's any question there. I think my point, in my position, is always to try and do what's best for the community. That's why I work for a nonprofit. But I think in the meantime, this gives us an opportunity to have a larger community within the neighborhood, or a larger conversation within the community and the neighborhood. And I do see a lot coming out of this, especially from Linda McGuire's point of view, that this block really does need redevelopment, and that redevelopment really does need to be healthy.
Mm-hmm. It does.
I think this would be a reasonable question to ask. If it's not, tell me. What period of time would you have in mind?
Sorry, I actually failed to mention that in my notes. I had it in my notes, I failed to mention it. This would actually be occurring during the fall semester, a lot of the work with the students. So it would probably actually be some sort of deferral until the end of the year.
Okay. That answers my question. Thanks. Good evening. Could you speak into the microphone when you talk, please? Thanks.
Good evening. Joy Smith. My husband, David Rust, and I own the property under discussion at 319 Bloomington. I intended to be, and I still intend to be, very brief tonight. I was surprised by Alicia's suggestion, and so I'm sort of going to put my remarks aside. I've had a good opportunity to talk with many of you about this issue, and we've shared our views with you in writing. Alicia is right. Our general position remains the same. We've talked about, David and I have talked about this, and as this has evolved, it seems to us that this discussion about our building comes down to two issues. One is timing, and that is our biggest concern as owners who have an investment here. We have felt all along that the designation of our building as a historic landmark at this point in time saddled us, or potentially saddled us, with more financial risk than we thought was reasonable. And that centered around the clear possibility that there would be develop, unknown, more unknowns about the development that would occur on all three sides of our building. So we continue to have those concerns. We imagine that at your consult last week, we know that city staff and those who are concerned about historic preservation feel like there are enough knowns that we shouldn't, that our concern may not be reasonable. But we also know that, for example, one of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission saw that concern that we have as quite reasonable. It wasn't his responsibility to consider that in terms of his vote. So we think that reasonable people can see our point of view about that. Therefore, we would ask that you not defer this, but that you vote no on the designation at this time, recognizing that it can be brought forward at a future time, and that as development plans and realities occur, that may be appropriate. The other thing that I was going to comment on tonight, and that I will briefly comment on, is process. We've talked with some of you about process, and the issue of process is a bigger one than just our building, and one that I've heard you talk about with regard to a lot of zoning issues this evening. When it comes to historic preservation and the guidelines that are outlined in the booklet that supports the zoning code, it seems to me that one reason that designations are researched and decisions are made about their viability before owners are informed. It may be that the historical, that adversarial situations that sometimes develop between historic preservationists and owners may be part of the background for why owners are left out of that process until the designation is already researched and laid out. But I see that process as problematic. And as you consider this in the future, I would encourage everybody involved to think about more dialogue on the front end. And I think that the conversation that Alicia and Gina Lee and Linda and I had is an example of that. The conversations that we've had with our neighboring property owners, the Polly Eyes, the Gilpins, other property owners in that block, I think those have all revealed that there is opportunity here for dialogue to develop positive things for the North Marketplace Square. So process is an issue. But for tonight, we would urge that you vote no on the historic landmark designation. We will certainly continue to engage with Alicia and Gina Lee and others who are interested in more dialogue about the block where our property is located. We can imagine down the road, after things have evolved over, I think, a longer period of time than Alicia has in mind, because I think for us as property owners, while historical research and designation and signs and that sort of thing are important, they won't really answer our underlying concerns about protecting our investment. But we can envision with enough time transpiring that we might welcome a designation, a landmark designation. So I think that concludes me trying to articulate quickly where we stand. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but, okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Gina Lee Swaim, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. In answer to Joy's thoughts about not being informed during the research, we don't really know how a property stacks up in terms of the criteria until the research is completed. So we can't, in terms of involving people or notifying them, that, I don't quite know how that would work. I very much don't want this to be an adversarial sort of process, and I'm sorry if she felt it was that way. And we will continue to look for ways to make it less so. The Historic Preservation Commission is the applicant, in this case, of the landmark designation. And looking at all the various options, we request that this be deferred until February 1st of 2019.
You said February 23rd?
1st.
1st, sorry.
February 1st, 2019.
Thank you.
May I just clarify?
Sure.
One point. I just, because this is a public hearing, I want to clarify, Gina Lee, that when I talked about adversarial situations between historic preservation that when I talked about adversarial situations between historic preservation and property owners, I did not in any way mean to suggest that I felt that the situation between us and the Historic Preservation Commission was adversarial. I was hypothesizing about why it might be that the process is designed the way it is. I think we've all worked hard to be civil about this.
Thank you, Joyce.
Hi, Lynda McGuire, 618 Ronald Street. I'm surprised about the consideration being put before you for deferral. And I think it really helps to highlight the different position, situation of this particular property compared to the other one, which their owners have been objecting. We heard tonight a lot of talk about context. And I'll remind everybody, maybe many of you might not have been around, but this whole block is the place, going back from first immigrants that came to the city, you know, beer halls were not like college bars today. They were places where people gathered together and drank beer because they were building community. And that happened there. The first gay bar and the first African-American bar was on Market Street, the Boulevard Room. I was on the Human Rights Commission when there was a complaint brought, but that's a story for another day. Grayson Ruby's, the all-women's restaurant, was on Lynn Street, where Bricks is now. Then we have our heirloom businesses, John's Grocery, Hamburg Inn, Polly Eyes Pizza. I'm sure I'm leaving some others out. And the context for this is that we have this rich history that has yet to be fully discovered, even though some of the buildings have gotten historic landmark. And we have this huge empty space in the middle of it. And that really distinguishes not only your consideration of context here, but also of process. And I believe that, sorry, I used to argue jury trials, but this is, I believe that we would be shortchanging the whole process by even deferring today. I'm not so hopeful that we may, because I'm older, that February or the end of the fall semester would be enough time. And I don't know the complexities of how far one can defer things before one brings them up again. But I do know that there is great interest, and the unknowns in this really position this property, as Joyce said, of being more risky for the property owner. Bob did a great job at your work session. And I was there, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when he was talking about how many stories of development, 48 bedrooms could be put out in that area, and up to four stories with three additional?
Not three additional, four stories?
Four stories. And so think about four stories, you know, that whole block, and then this nice little gem in the middle of it. So, you know, this is the jewel that many people believe that it is. We need to save the little jewel box that it's in now until we fully develop what that is. Okay. And I really appreciate, and I want to say this too, Alicia and Gina Lee, and I think that what we're saying to you is that we recognize the potential and the process that has been stalled, because even Opticos said that this area needs more discussion about what the neighbors and the property owners would like to see development there. And that's just even from last August, when they submitted their report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Anyone else? All right. I'm not seeing anyone else. Here's a surprising question. Are you inclined to support, to agree with?
No.
What?
That's a mistake. You don't, we already had the consult with P&amp;Z, so skip that.
Oh, so that's a mistake. Text is a mistake. Oh, I thought I made the mistake.
We do nothing on that.
Oh, that's right. We did. That's right. We did.
So just, just for the sake of pleasing ourselves, we had a terrific consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission and with the Historic Preservation Commission. Very fruitful, very informative. All right. So I need to close the public hearing. No? Or have a motion to defer? One or the other, right? Okay. So, all right. So I need to know whether you want to defer.
Need to make a motion before we can talk, or?
Yeah. That'd be the smart thing to do.
So moved. Second.
What do you, motion to defer?
Oh, okay. I was doing what the motion?
Just to have a discussion about whether to do that or not. So motion by Cole, second by Botchway?
Let's get, motion to continue the public hearing until?
February 1st, 2019.
Yeah.
You may just want to make it your first meeting in February. I'm not sure if the fear falls on a Tuesday. Yeah. First Tuesday of February 2019.
I would say no. I think the property owner has asked for a vote. I think, I know it's processed to go back through if, in fact, that happens. But I think there is a lot of discussion that needs to be done on that north side. And I think it's in fairness to the property owner that there's a vote.
I think so also, you know, we don't have to defer it, because I don't see a point of deferring if the owner is still like, I will agree to defer it if the owner have a potential of changing their mind. And also from here until, the main point of this, because of the area around it, we don't know what the plan of that area and all this kind of parking lot around it. I went there and I saw it myself, and I went around the block and just tried to have an idea. But that's why I think, you know, it will take more than February 1st, or the first Tuesday in February, to figure out what they're going to do in that area, so they can convince the owner. Because that's their fear, I guess, you know? What can happen around the area, all this parking lot? What's going to be there? You know, that's why I don't support the deferring. We should move forward.
I would agree. I'd like to vote tonight. I mean, ultimately, I wanted the motion on the table because I wanted to talk about it. But yeah, I mean, I would like to vote tonight.
I also would want to proceed with the vote. I appreciate Alicia's conversations and points about the students, but my concern is that the more time expires June 1st and can't be put in place for another year. So I think that's a valid concern also.
Well, it's clear that there's a majority in favor of moving ahead tonight with a vote. So we should have a vote on the motion that's on the floor. Is this a voice vote?
It's a voice vote.
So the motion is to defer until first meeting in February 2019. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion is defeated 5-2, I think, but it's defeated in any event. All right.
Four, I think.
Well, I, yeah.
One, two, three.
I voted.
Well, how did you vote? I didn't hear.
I voted.
To defer? To not defer?
To not defer, sorry.
Didn't hear.
Sorry.
So it was Cole and Thomas?
Yep, Cole and Thomas.
All right. So that means we need to have a motion to give first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by Saleh. Hold on for a second.
Yes.
Are we okay?
We need to close the public hearing.
Sorry?
We need to close the public hearing.
Oh, I thought we did.
I thought I did. So, all right.
You're not continuing it. So, yeah, we need to close it.
Sorry. So, yeah, sorry. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
You're going to break your computer.
For those of you who don't know, it's my computer.
Move first consideration.
Second.
All right. So moved by Botchway, second by Saleh. All right, discussion.
Yeah, I am not going to support the motion. And let me just start out by saying, I really, some people may not believe this, but it's true. I really do appreciate the work that the Historic Preservation Commission and the Friends of Historic Preservation do in this community. I believe it is tremendously important work. And I think if those of you, Gina Lee and Alicia and the other people who work with you, were not doing that, we wouldn't have the 47-plus, you know, local landmarks that we already have that do make Iowa City what it is, and I think are very, very important for this community. And I hope that you won't give up on what you do. And there's times we're going to agree on certain properties, and there's times that we're going to disagree. It's my feeling and my understanding that the Historic Preservation Commission and P&amp;Z did as they are charged to do, based on the various ordinances, regulations, laws, et cetera, in terms of what they take into consideration and what they do not take into consideration. But part of what this city council, I believe, is charged with taking into consideration, based on the fact that when a property owner protests something like this, it sets us up for a supermajority vote. To me, that charges us with looking at the property owner's interest, as well as everything that has been brought to us by Historic Preservation and P&amp;Z. I tend to be one that leans more towards, if there is a disagreement, to protecting property owners' rights. I think this is an incredibly beautiful property. I think the owners have done a great job with it, and I hope it will continue to be preserved. And I hope the opportunity for the landmark designation will happen someday in the future. But I cannot sit here and dismiss the interest that property owners have in terms of the time and money and emotion and effort that they have put into being property owners. And for that reason, I will not support the historic designation.
I will not support the historic designation as well, and I have many reasons for that. I think it's really premature to designate this property as historic landmark right now, because before such thing, as I told you, I was there and I saw the area. I guess before such designation, there should be an evidence that the block will be developed in a manner that enhances the historic attribute in the area. And also, the concern raised by the, you know, by the owner of the building, I guess, is legitimate. And it should carry weight with the council. I appreciate their desire to protect their initial investment in the property, because I guess if suddenly council come and go, I know that, you know, as I guess Bob said, four-story building could be on the parking lot if it happened, but council come and go, maybe in four years, no one here, and somebody else having other ideas, and they will build this high-rise building around it. That's why I don't think I should, you know, support that for now, until I know what's going to happen in the area. And historic preservation is important. I swear it's important. And I support a lot of them. And I appreciate all the work that you guys do. But for this specific one, I don't think I'm going to support it. But I like it. I support all of them, and I will continue to support them, as long as, you know, in the same area and all this surrounded building around them look like them, you know, just like the houses in the residential area, where nothing going to be change around it. But it is, you know, but that is not, you know, it is very important, but it's not the only consideration in this block. There are many forces at play here. That's why I'm not supporting it.
So, do you want to speak first? Go ahead.
I am in favor of the designation. I appreciate the property owner's opinions, and Susan spoke about having the owner's interest in mind, but I'm really kind of unsure of what that interest, I'm still not really clear what that interest is. And I just don't understand why we would treat this property any differently from the others that we approved previously, the five others that we approved. I just don't understand.
Because the area, no, not only that, I guess, for me, because, you know, all the houses that I saw is look, you know, awesome in the, and all the areas around them is already being developed, it's never going to change. I'm not going to see like, but here, it is parking lot on the west side, parking lot, I guess, on the south side, and also the two houses from Mercy, I guess, on the, like, Gilbert. I don't know, you know, and those old houses. And I don't know what's going to happen. Maybe, you know, it will be, somebody will come and build like, you know, high-rise building, and the value of this building will go down. You know, even I talked to a real estate person about the area, and they told me the same thing. I'm not really having experience on that, but, you know, just by asking people, I try to make up my mind. I guess specifically this one, I'm not supporting it.
I don't know if you're, are you done, Pauline? Okay. I don't like unknowns, you know? And I think at times it may seem like I'm somewhat kind of open, and as far as conversation up here, but I, you know, try to bring a bit of levity to, I think, a deliberative process that we all engage in. I would say I see unknowns on both sides in this particular issue. What is clear to me, however, is what we ask our Historic Preservation to do, and not all the members of council were here at that time. And I don't, I mean, I think it was important to hear the historical, the history of the particular location that we're talking about. And I appreciate that history. And I was on council when I specifically was a part of, you know, voting in favor of the historic preservation doing this work. I agree council change. I mean, that's why votes happen. That's why we, that's why, you know, we go out and campaign and all that fun stuff. And I also think that property owners' interest changes well. And so I'm not, I was, I was at the first part of that Historic Planning Commission consultation, and I heard Mark speak about some of the value from a property owner's standpoint that was concerning. I was not, I was not convinced from that conversation that there would be a significant reduction in value, because I see historic properties surround our town. Historic property just recently, but sold for a couple of million dollars downtown. I think that's a part of the character and nature of Iowa City. I also appreciated Bob's presentation as far as the potential property that could go in place adjacent to the current property that we're designating. And I did not feel like it was a high rise. I felt like, you know, from any council's deliberation, and I know I'm, in a sense, from a staggered standpoint, going to be here a little bit longer than, I mean, you know what I mean, from a four-year standpoint, maybe a little bit longer than you. And so I feel very comfortable making the argument that, you know, the historic neighborhood and nature of this particular district needs to be upheld. And having that conversation and coming before us, I just feel like, again, and I guess I've been redundant on this issue tonight, especially, it does come down to me as far as process is concerned. And while I do hear why there could be potential deviations from that process, I don't, I don't, I'm not convinced as far as any type of understanding of where we fall on the level of unknowns. What is clear to me, and as I said before, is that we ask our Historic Preservation Commission to do some things in relation to this, and I think we need to follow through with these designations. I would agree with Pauline. I don't see why this is different than any other property that we would designate. I do have concerns as we move to the end of our meeting about how we can incorporate some of the comments about process, because I don't want the rug to be, well, it's not really pulled, but, you know, surprise people in this when we, even as we deliberate on this conversation, or maybe even think about doing research, I think is an opportunity to let property owners know. But I actually am in favor of the historic preservation, and I'll be voting yes for this designation tonight.
I'd like to take a shot. If we vote not to approve the designation, which certainly appears to be the case now, there will be, I think, no meaningful difference between that decision and our decision not to defer. The commission can always come back a year from now with another application, and we can process it again. can process it again. And I don't see much difference between that and the way things are, appear, they're going to be. So, let me kind of signal a little bit about how I think about this situation, about the proposed designation. In the end, I'm going to vote in favor, just like Kingsley said. I agree it would be good to have a plan, perhaps a form-based code, in place for the entire block, and I personally am committed to seeing such a plan developed. However, I think it's highly unlikely that the city staff or the consultant will be able to complete such a plan within the next year. That fact does introduce some uncertainty about what might happen on the nearby properties, but I do not see how that fact should lead one to conclude that the building should not be designated as an historical landmark. If anything, the uncertainty is precisely why the building should be preserved. Moreover, as Bob Mikkul taught us in his excellent presentation during the consultation, Joy and David, the owners would be free to repair or replace the nonhistoric additions and build something new behind the historic structure that enhances the value of their property and the block as a whole. And designating it as a landmark now will enable the building to become an anchor for the design of the block as a whole. So, I'm going to vote in favor of it.
I'm going to vote in favor as well. I would have preferred the deferral, which, as I understood, it could be continued beyond the first meeting in February, if necessary, which I think would have given us a little bit more nimble a position in terms of responding to contingencies in the unknown future. But I was, you know, clearly, the planning and zoning and historic preservation votes were pretty consistent and clear. And I think, like everyone on council, I'm also concerned with, you know, the financial viability of a project. I certainly don't want any historic designation to compromise the financial viability of any property. And I think at our consult, I was convinced that even in the worst case with our current zoning, I didn't feel that the development around 319 Bloomington would be of such a scale and character that it would diminish the value of the property. As Jim mentioned, I think in a way, we will just proceed. You know, I think, fortunately, we, you know, I have good faith in Joy and David, and remaining true to this vision that I think all of us share, which is, how can we develop Northside Market Place in its fullness, with 319 being one of the anchors of that vision? So, we will continue to do that. We will work on the form-based code. One thought I would add to this discussion would be, and this is a more general issue, is looking at the possibility of transfer of development rights, which I think is often one of those issues which comes up. You know, the threat or concern about the diminishment in value of a property. This has been an issue in the past. I think it will be an issue in the future. I'm looking at the downtown and how that might be a critical factor. If we can develop a strategy where we can transfer those development rights from a property we wish to designate historically, to an area where we're trying to encourage development, I think that's, that seems to me to promote these kinds of win-win situations, which I certainly advocate. I think we can also, through the form-based coding, improve on our CB2 zoning, which is currently the case, to make sure that we fine-tune around 319 Bloomington, so that any, you know, that no one will feel in any way concerned that the, you know, the sunlight, the qualities that we all strive to achieve on any one given property will be maximized and optimized. So, again, I think, you know, for now, I will support the designation. It's not going to be, it doesn't have the votes to be supported by council, but with that, with that being the case, I think just looking forward, I just, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, what Linda was describing, a full-bore kind of community conversation, coming up with a very clear, articulate vision for Northside Market Place.
I'm hopeful, as Jim talked about, that everyone can engage in the process that a deferral would have achieved, which is this conversation will continue, and that people will try to work through some of these very, very tough issues. These aren't easy issues. We love Iowa City. We love the historic properties, but there are real issues about what percentage the property owner has to bear. And because the property owner has made the objection, that's something we have to take into consideration. You know, I always have sort of a Pollyanna view of things. I always like to try to find consensual resolution where possible. I was very hopeful, the fact that the developer, or the property owner talked about possibly at some point in the future. And that's one of the reasons why I was hopeful for a deferral, that we may be able to come to that. So, we can still get to that. John talked about one tool we do not have, at least I'm pretty sure we don't, is this transfer of development rights concept. I hope that we can further explore that, because that's a tool that we have in a Riverfront Crossings district that has been very effective at allowing us to get the preservation and the growth at the same time, to eat our cake and have it too. Hopefully, we can continue to explore that. But I can't support this, at least at this current stage at this point. So, hopefully, we can continue on the conversation, because we all love Iowa City. We know that, and I just commend everyone for the very thoughtful conversation we've had. They are tough issues. It's tough for us all to come together to resolution on this, but I'm going to vote no at this point.
I just want to add something also. Like, voting no today, that should not discourage the Historic Preservation Commission to still reach out to that block and, you know, talk about it. Because as I hear from the owner, she said if she knew a clear plan for that, she can still come back and do this. Then, I guess, I encourage you to still, like, reaching out until you find, figure out what the, you know, like, a plan for the whole block, and maybe this will come back to us again.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
MEMS?
No.
Saleh?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes.
Botschway?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
All right, so, motion fails on a 4-3 vote, with MEMS, Cole, and Saleh in the negative. All right, we can move on, right? I'm not skipping anything, though. Item 6E, rezoning historic landmark designation, 410 to 412 North Clinton Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 410 to 412 North Clinton Street, from high-density multifamily residential, RM 44, to RM 44 with a historic preservation overlay, RM 44 slash OHP. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for your patience.
Good.
Good evening. I'm an attorney here in Iowa City, and I represent the new owners of the property at 410, 412 South Clinton. They purchased the property here approximately two weeks ago. I know Bob Crane and his attorneys have been here before you, and have presented their feelings about the proposed rezoning, and I don't want to go over and rehash all of those, although I do think they were good reasons. I don't want to waste your time by going over them all again today. I am here on behalf of the owners, requesting that you reject the proposed rezoning and vote no. There's a few things that I do want to discuss regarding the summary of the history of the property. I noticed on the proposed rezoning resolution, excuse me, ordinance, it discussed the history and the association with prominent people who lived in Iowa City. And I was looking at the summary here with the packet that was submitted to the city, and it's called the Cochran Sharpless Dennis House. And there's a summary of Dr. Cochran, who was the first owner of the house when it was first built. I looked at the abstract, which real estate attorneys look at when they're reviewing title to a property, to make sure the seller has a good title to the property. And I noticed that Dr. Cochran owned the property for about a year, then he conveyed it away. And I just want to point that out to you, when it's called the Cochran Sharpless Dennis House, that the first owner referred to, and all of the accomplishments of his life, he lived, excuse me, owned the, or lived in the house for approximately a year. Then the summary goes on to talk about how Samuel Sharpless and his wife Priscilla owned the property. Well, that's not quite true either. Samuel was never an owner of the property. Priscilla Sharpless owned this property. There are some accomplishments here, talking about Samuel Sharpless, but Priscilla was the one that owned this property. She owned it until she died. When she died, she, her estate went to several beneficiaries who could not agree on how to divide up the estate, so they sued each other, and the judge decided the property's going to be sold, public auction. And so, it was sold to a gentleman who bought it and owned it for a short period of time, and then sold it to Mr. Dennis, Mr. Edwin Dennis, and that's how you get the Dennis, the third name on the, on the house. Now, he lived in it for approximately seven years, until his death. Now, the description here says that the property was owned by Edwin and his wife Anna. Again, that's, and that they bought the house. Well, that wasn't quite right. Edwin bought the house. When he died, as Will said, "I'll give the home to my wife Anna, provided she never remarries." And if she does remarry, I'm canceling the gift. And she did not remarry. She lived there until she passed away, and then ultimately, her daughter Gertrude lived there until approximately 1965. Now, in the 1960s, that's when an addition was put on the property, which is larger than the initial home. And hopefully, you've seen the property, but this is a picture of the backside of the property. And it consists of apartments. And it was built in the 1960s. It's quite different than the initial construction of the property from the 1800s. Now, I've, I looked at your city ordinance, the zoning and the historic overlay ordinance, and the criteria for designating the property as a historical landmark is, if it's not verbatim, it's almost verbatim, is what is being used by the National Register. And I've looked at the ordinance and the criteria established by the National Register, and it talks about a building. And it says a building can be designated as a historical landmark. That's what your, again, that's what your ordinance says, that's what the National Register says. But the National Register Bulletin's publication on applying their criteria defines what a building is. Parts of buildings, such as interiors, facades, or wings, are not eligible, independent of the rest of the existing building. The whole building must be considered, and its significant features must be identified. This is a building which, again, more than half of it was built after 1960. And I think you need to consider the whole building when you're trying to consider whether this is a, should be designated as a historical landmark. If this is, my clients purchased this property with the current zoning, RM 44, your highest density zoning, and their purposes are to use the property consistent with their zoning. If, and Mr. Crane, you know, he's a local appraiser, who's lived in Iowa City and has been an appraiser here for decades, he was quite concerned about the devaluation of his property if it was designated a historical landmark. And, you know, as Bob mentioned, I believe it's your joint session here the other night, that if, I don't think he took into consideration parking yet, but he thought that if it could be developed according to the current zoning, 24 units could be placed on the property, which consists of either eight three-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms, or 24 one-bedrooms. But he thought that if the historical landmark designation would be made, that approximately 85% of the bedrooms could still be used and applied to the property. However, he's talking about bedrooms, he's not talking about units there, and there's a difference, that the older part of the building has nine bedrooms. Bedrooms are not as valuable as units. They consist of a bedroom. And the income that could be made from a bedroom is different than a unit. And so, I want to point out that there's a difference between 24 units versus 85% of that amount, which consists of nine bedrooms and the rest units. So, in summary, I would like to say that I don't believe that this, when you consider the whole building, that it qualifies the criteria to be established as a historical landmark. And the significant damage to the value of the property and the property rights of my clients are enough of a damage that this property should not be rezoned with a historic landmark overlay. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Any questions for Bob? I don't hear any, but it could be, some questions will come up as we go on. Anyone else? Bob?
I would just like to clarify, our zoning analysis wasn't on bedrooms, it was square footage. That actual square footage, how it's divided into bedrooms is, it's unknown, but it wasn't. Our analysis didn't conclude that they could get 85% of the bedrooms, it was 85% of the square footage that you could get without the historic building on the property.
Thanks, Bob.
I don't have all my research with me in terms of the Cochrins and the Sharplesses and the Dennises. I do know that Mr. Cochran was a Civil War surgeon during, and I believe that would be during the period when he was, when he owned the house. And I think I mentioned at another, at the May 5, last public hearing, that the stories of the women who owned these houses or lived there are seldom discoverable anymore, unless you have the kinds of diaries and letters and such, that, so, we find names like Samuel Sharpless in the Johnson County Bank. We don't find names like Priscilla, because history was not written then that way. People's, women's contributions, even if it was supporting the family, getting the house clean, were not recorded. But the point on this house is that this is, its architectural merit is significant. So, think about it. This house was built in 1865. This is the same year when, on a day in the spring, old Capitol columns were draped in black mourning crepe because of the memorial service the community held for Abraham Lincoln. And only four blocks away, that same year, this house was built, and it looks very much as it did at that time. It very much gives an invaluable sense of time and place. One of the counselors at the joint session asked how much of Iowa City is in conservation and historic districts, and staff found that information for us. Iowa City is about 16,710 acres. The historic and conservation districts are about 413 acres. That's about 2.5% in districts. There's about 19 acres that are landmarks that are not in districts. So, that 19 acres is about 1/10th of 1% of Iowa City. That's how much of Iowa City is devoted to individual landmarks that are not in districts.
What was that percent again, Ginelli?
1/10th of 1%. So, is that, that, houses that are not, or buildings that are not in a district, conservation or historic. Of those individual landmarks, let's count the number of landmarked houses built during that pivotal decade in U.S. that pivotal decade in U.S. history, the 1860s. I counted four. Four that are landmarks from, built in the 1860s, that are not in districts. I believe that it's time we added this one, and as one of the most significant ones in the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenely. All right, hearing none. I need to find out whether you are inclined to vote in accord with the complaining, no?
We've already done that, yeah.
We've already done the...
God, yeah, I wish.
I already had a...
I wish that wasn't there, because I'm doing this by rote, sorry. My bad. So, I need to close this public hearing. Have a motion for first consideration, please.
Samute.
Second.
Moved by Botchway and second by Selay. Discussion.
Well, I'm going to do the same thing I did last time. And for me, there's even additional, I think, reason to vote against this one. I'm really concerned with the amount of, the addition, the size of that addition, the impact of that on the historic nature of this building. So, to me, and I don't have all the regulations in front of me, and so I don't, I mean, Mr. Michael said that, you know, more than 50% of that space now is not historic and based on National Register regulations. They would consider that then not eligible, if I'm interpreting his words correctly. And even if that weren't the case, again, and I won't repeat all my comments from earlier, it's getting late, but I think the property owners' rights in these cases where they are protesting these designations are incredibly important. But in this case, I think there's a lot more that goes along with it in terms of the adjustments and things that have been done to this building. So, I will not be supporting the designation.
I'm going to speak up and say that I am going to support the designation. And while I agree with Susan that the property owners' rights are important, I don't think they're dispositive. And the reason why I'm coming to a different conclusion here is because I think it presents a different location. It's in a historic neighborhood, or not formerly historic, but the surrounding properties, it's proximity to the university. I think frankly, when I look at that backside, I look at something that, with the benefits and the waivers they could get in terms of parking, that could easily be redeveloped. I understand that we cannot protect that back area, and that you could get a very intensive development of this property that wouldn't significantly impinge on the value of the property. We know that. I think that Bob had talked about 85%. So, it's not a huge diminution. So, that's where I'm at at this point. I think that this is a different location, it's a different property, and I'm exercising my judgment, applying different criteria, and so I am going to support it in this instance.
Also, I agree with Rockne, because, you know, I'm going to feel differently in this. My point with the other one, the area, is not being developed, but here, I guess, you know, it's surrounded by historic area, and that's why I will support, you know, the historic representation on this.
I'm supportive. I mean, I'm a little confused, but...
Then vote no.
No, well, I'm not confused about this particular piece. I'm more confused with the difference between the two properties. Again, from a process standpoint, you know, I think our Historic Preservation Commission brought forth a property that needs to be designated. I would even say that my concern is even more heightened, based on the recent purchase and how things could just, you know, we're looking at historic pres, we're looking at preserving these historic buildings, and ultimately, there are things that happen quickly that we don't necessarily have any control of. And, you know, I appreciate, obviously, the Historic Preservation Commission's work on doing this to ensure that we are preserving these properties. And so, I'm going to vote in favor and say yes.
This one was a little more tough for me, although I have to admit, the change in ownership kind of changed my opinion on that, because that tended to make me a little leery of going along with the denial of it. The longer I looked at the property, that little building, it's this just cute little historic building, has a lot of history, is surrounded by, across the street, the dorm that I loved and lived in, very historic, Courier Hall. So, the history aspect of it. I also think that with the new owners, they should go along with this and be happy that we designate this, because as I think Kingsley or somebody had brought up about the, like the parking waivers, if they, if they want to, because to be honest, I think the property that's built in the back of it, those apartments, are not very attractive. And I would be in favor of that being redeveloped. And I think perhaps having the property designated as historic perhaps would give them more positive things to do with, to redevelop that property in the rear. So, I would be in favor of going along with it.
Yeah, so I want to start with a couple of basic facts. The Historic Preservation voted unanimously in favor of the designation, and it did so by following the criteria they're called upon to follow. And they even identified the building because of, because the council had asked them to actively identify buildings that warranted preservation. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the designation. And they did so because designating the building is consistent with the comprehensive plan in their judgment. So, I think those two facts matter. I note that Bob Michael, representing the new owner and the previous owner and attorney, claimed that designating this property as an historic landmark would have a severe adverse effect or restriction on the value of the property. But we also held a consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, a very fruitful and informative conversation. And during that, Bob Mickle told us that a three-story building covering 50% of the site's footprint could be developed with about 18,000 square foot, feet. If the house is preserved, a new building could be constructed in the back with a loss of only about 13% compared to the full redevelopment of the site. That's the way I understood it, though. I hope that's correct, Bob. And that assumed that parking could be provided. During that same consultation, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Jenely Swaim, added that historic landmarks are eligible for reduced parking requirements, which eases that complication. And of course, she also told us, reminded us that this particular house is under threat of demolition, primarily because it's located so close to the university and therefore an opportune situation for someone who provides housing for students, et cetera, who live nearby the university. In any event, I think the concerns of the owner are not trivial, but I think they're not so excessive as to warrant rejecting this particular proposal. So, I'm going to vote in favor of the landmark designation.
I'm also going to vote in favor of it, and I think I can just refer to the comments we've heard that also supported it. I would just simply add, I find this project, and to some degree, 319 East Bloomington, which just preceded it, two interesting examples of how, in this case, a building from the 1860s has proven to be a viable structure in terms of serving uses for that very long period of time. It's seen on its property, which is, I think, approximately a quarter of an acre, an addition on the back, which kind of reflects the nature of land use in that particular part of Iowa City, that we can expect relatively high density of development because of its location, and that despite that fact, the significance of the building and its historic character is not, in my view, was not significantly diminished in terms of its frontage, which I think was critical to its historic significance. And then, the comments that Jenely made tonight, which I had asked that question at their, at our joint consultation, are pretty interesting in that I think it speaks to, for me, the, what I almost want to say, the outsized significance of historic preservation in Iowa City, that the image of this town as historic is contingent on such a small percentage of the overall population, overall acreage of the city. You know, these buildings leave a deep impression, and I think they also add, and this is where I feel counsel comes in, insofar as I think the impact on the financial aspects of it, as Jim mentioned, are not, you know, they're not trivial, but they're not significant in terms of the loss with respect to square footage. But their value to the community, both in terms of its sense of itself, and I would argue even from a financial standpoint, more than make up the difference. And so, as counsel, I think that's a very important consideration. The amount of value that would be lost with the loss of our historic heritage with this particular project, I think, would be, is really worth considering, and why I support the designation.
I've already commented. Yeah, I've already commented.
Oh, you had, sorry.
For once, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sully? Yes. Taylor? Yes. Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Item 6F, rezoning 225, let me say, carry, well, that's right, it's first reading, isn't it?
Pass and adopt.
Is that, that's pass and adopt?
Six F.
That was first consideration, right?
The last one was...
I'm sorry, what says first consideration, so...
Oh, that was... E was first consideration?
No. I'm sorry, that was a vote to pass and adopt, or that was a vote for first consideration?
First consideration.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, right.
I'm just trying to be clear, reading my own text here. All right, item 6F, rezoning 225 Prentice Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.1 acres of property located at 225 and 225 and 1/2 Prentice Street, from intensive commercial CI-1, two riverfront crossings, central crossings, RFC CX. This is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion, please?
Move pass and adoption.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second by Selay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Motion passes. Item 6H, rezoning historic landmark designation, 715 Park Road. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 715 Park Road from low-density, single-family residential, RS5, to RS5 with a historic preservation overlay, RS5 OHP zone. This is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion, please?
Move adoption. Second.
Moved by MEMS, second by Selay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, seven to zero. Item 6I, rezoning historic landmark designation, 1029 North Dodge Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1029 North Dodge Street, from medium-density, single-family residential, RS8, to RS8 with a historic preservation overlay. This is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Selay, second by Thomas. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 7, fiscal year 2018 budget amendment, amending the fiscal year 2018 operating budget. I'll open the public hearing. Hi there.
Hey. Jacqueline Budding, and Budget Compliance Officer. Get out of here quick. So, this is the third and final budget amendment for fiscal year 2018. This includes larger dollar amount items that have arisen since the last amendment that was done on March 6. On the revenue side, the larger ticket items include affordable housing fee in Luau of about 140,000, or 400,000, sorry, as well as transfers related to the Van Buren Water Main and Storm sewer project, insurance recoveries for the public housing CIP project for about 265,000, contributions for the animal center expansion and study for about 200,000, and then it also includes the two police grants that the department received for, one for data-driven justice for 173,000, and then the other from the DOJ for 75,500. And then, the table on the left is just a snippet from the state forms that includes the amounts from the total budget as certified last on March 6. And then, the middle column includes the current line items being amended, and then the far right column is the final budget. Then, on the expenditure side, includes the Van Buren Water Main and Storm Sewer again for the 285, the public housing CIP for the storm debt, storm damage for 265,000, the same 200,000 for the animal center, and then expenditures for the related police grants on the revenue side, as well... Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Hims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, council appointments. We had quite a task before us, and still do. So, item 10A, Airport Commission. We have two vacancies to fill for your terms. We received an application from Derek Libree. We have a one-female requirement, one no requirement, so he's eligible.
I will support him.
Second.
Sorry, I'm observing conversation over here.
I don't know that we need to second. We usually do this all at once, but.
I meant.
You're tired.
Yeah.
I get it. Yeah, he was the only application. He's a flight instructor. I thought he was a good candidate.
Perfect fit.
Good fit.
I want to see if I messed up something here. Item 10B, Historic Preservation Commission at Large. We have one vacancy to fill, a three-year term, and we received a list of applications for that at-large position.
I'm personally familiar with Quentin Pittson and would support his appointment.
I would only suggest that, in a way, we look at all four of these at once because of the gender requirements.
Gender requirement, yeah. Trying to figure out how to balance all that is.
Because we've got two female, one male, and one non. And if I read this right, we've got a number of applicants for at-large. We've got one for College Green, one for East College Street, and one for Woodlawn.
Historic Preservation.
Is that how other people read it?
Yes.
So, with only one male, when I looked at this, I thought Lee Shope was an acceptable candidate for Woodlawn.
For Woodlawn.
Because he lives there.
Me, too.
I'd agree.
So that takes out the one male.
Right.
I thought Helen Burford was an acceptable candidate for College Green.
Agreed.
You know, on that point, maybe I overlooked it because I do such things occasionally, but I did not see the College Green position in my packet. So, I'm just saying that. I think Helen Burford would be great in that seat.
Wait a minute, so go, so can we go, sorry, I missed this. So can we go back to the first one? So we decided who, or what?
Derek Libree, for the Airport Commission.
I knew that part, I'm sorry, for the first.
Lee Shope for Woodlawn?
Yeah, he's Woodlawn District, next age.
Lee Shope. Oh, jumped ahead. He was the only applicant for Woodlawn?
And he lives there.
And Helen Burford was the only applicant for College Green?
Oh, I thought there was, I thought Esther.
What Esther was also, I thought. Esther was East College.
Yeah, that's different.
And, yeah, so Helen was the only one for College Green, correct?
She's East College as well.
She lives on East College also. Isn't that, is that College Green?
I don't know, because somebody applied for Jefferson, and they don't live in the Jefferson District, so.
Helen, it does say College Green Historic District on her application, for Helen Buford.
Apparently, there's a seat for the College Green area and another seat for the East College Street area.
Oh, I see, there's an East College Street and a College Green.
So Helen Burford, right, so Susan, you were leading us to the point where we need one female and one non?
Okay, so are we right that Helen Burford is for College Green?
Correct, yeah. I look back at the, and it said on the application, it said College Green Historic District.
Okay. Then, the way I worked through it, East College Street was Esther Baker, which I would leave open right now. She's had one partial and three full terms.
Agree.
And just like we did with Jay Honahan with the senior center, I think we should leave it open for right now.
I agree.
I don't object to that.
I agree.
Agree.
So, we've got one male and one female, so that leaves us either, really, anything, either gender, right, for at-large?
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, and we have quite a few people to choose from.
So.
I thought Pittson was an excellent applicant, as John suggested earlier, especially since Frank Wagner, we're not, apparently not going to reappoint Frank Wagner.
I would agree.
Right.
And Quentin is a contractor, so he's very competent in the building trades, particularly historic preservation-type construction work, so it seemed like a good fit.
I'd support Quentin.
That's fine.
I want to support Quentin as well, but my only, I would say, my only piece to this, so I spent, the problem is, I'm not able to search kind of the right criteria, so I'm kind of flipping back and forth. I just wanted to make note of, I don't want to mess up the name, too, Shu Wan or Wan Wan. I actually had him as my first person. I know it didn't have necessarily the same level of depth as some of the other candidates, especially in relation to the qualifications for experience, but I'm only noting that just because I'm gonna, there's going to be a running theme as we run through these, so.
Yeah, so I'd like to follow up on a certain point. Am I right in thinking that we need to have somebody from the building trades on the commission? Because that's one reason for appointing Pittser and.
Not on historic preservation. I don't think there is.
Historic preservation is based on the disciplines you have to have representative from each district.
I say that because, I don't know, maybe it was.
Building trades.
I got some kind of message indicating that.
Court of Appeals.
All right, so we don't have to appoint Pittser unless we want to.
I agree with Kingsley on Shu Wan. He was, it was kind of close between he and Quentin. Quentin, with his remodeling experience in preservation, but Shu Wan had a knowledge of the commission and what it does, has history degrees, he's young, and of course, with the diversity, he's Chinese, so it would be kind of good to have someone of that background on one of our commissions.
Yeah, I did not, I felt somebody who's been, one, in the country, it sounded like for two years, or at least in Iowa City. I'm always cautious about appointing students to some of these, just because of longevity within the community, not totally against it. I mean, Derek Libree's a student, flight instructor and student there. I'm trying to flip through like everybody else and find.
It's tough.
Yeah, I know.
But I was, I mean, that's, that goes back to my point, it was just level, I mean, level of diversity on the commission, so I do appreciate that additional piece. And I mean, there's some, there's some, there are some things that I kind of want to do, I don't know, electronically, to help kind of look at things online, but I would believe that would present, I mean, he would be, you know, our only diverse candidate on the commission. And then I would also, you know, again, I go back to the, ultimately, the answer that I would say isn't necessarily in the same line as the other applicant, but research does show when you have a diverse member on a committee, you know, there's a deliberation that is different relative to that member who holds a diverse identity compared to the more homogeneous identities on our, on our board and commission. And so again, this is a running theme, so that's why my first was, and I feel bad not necessarily knowing how to articulate the name, Shu Wan, but that's why I would, I would support his particular designation.
I'm comfortable with Pittson.
Yeah, so I think Pittson, we have four votes, don't we?
For Pittson?
Pittson.
Well, I don't know, you favored Pittson, Rockney?
Yeah.
John, you did? Susan, you do? All right, let's go with Pittson. All right, let me make sure I'm writing that down. But you make a very good point, Kingsley, and so we may get another opportunity on this. All right, the next is Housing and Community Development. We have three vacancies for full terms, three-year terms, and we have a list of applicants, 10 applications, 10 applicants.
Well, I would just note, I believe there's an error in this list.
Yeah, it should be nine.
Bill Brant should not be in this list. His application is for planning and zoning.
That is correct, Susan.
I know, yes.
Did you get that? Yeah.
No, I did not.
Bill Brant should not be in this list. He's actually applied for planning and zoning.
Oh, for the plan, okay.
Planning and zoning, correct. Well, my first one was Maria Padron. She's serving an unexpired term, and so lots of times when we have people who've filled a partial term, we do tend to give them an opportunity for a full term.
Sure, I agree.
That would be my, so that takes one female.
Or one non.
Or one non, correct.
I agree.
Right, I like Maria also, again, because to fulfill her term, and the diversity again, she's Hispanic background.
I would, oh, go ahead.
I like Maria and Megan.
Sorry, you like who?
Megan Alter.
Megan Alter and Maria, yeah.
Like us two women.
I support Megan Alter, too. I was going to recommend her.
Yeah, those, I had those two.
Put a star by her name.
I was actually going to support Jean Park, but I also like Megan Alter, so I'm not necessarily as.
I'm sorry, who was the other one you were going to say?
Jean Park.
No, no, it's not on my list.
Park?
She was on one of these, yeah. Maybe, she must have been on another. She was for HCDC, wasn't she? Or was that Human Rights Commission?
She was on Human Rights.
Human Rights Commission, yeah.
Yeah, Human Rights, there she is. Yeah.
I'm right, put in my place.
One of the millions.
I think.
Then I had David Smith as my other one.
I like Deputy Smith, too.
I liked Faridish, Faridig.
What did you say again?
Jessica Faridig.
Wait a minute, we have two women now.
We have two women already.
We need one man.
We have Maria Padron, we have Megan Alter.
Well, but we can have one female, one male, and one non, or, you know.
Right, so we can only have two females.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to change that.
of the commission and what it does, has history degrees. He's young and, of course, with the diversity, he's Chinese, so it would be kind of good to have someone of that background on one of our commissions.
Yeah, I did not, I felt somebody who's been, one, in the country, it sounded like for two years, or at least in Iowa City. I'm always cautious about appointing students to some of these, just because of longevity within the community. Not totally against it, I mean, Derek LeBrie's a student, flight instructor and student there. I'm trying to flip through like everybody else and find...
It's tough.
Yeah, I know.
But I was, I mean, that goes back to my point, it was just level, I mean, level diversity on the commission, so I do appreciate that additional piece. And, I mean, there's some, there's some, there are some things that I kind of want to do, I don't know, electronically to help kind of look at things online, but I would believe that would present, I mean, he would be, you know, our only diverse candidate on the commission. And then I would also, you know, again, I go back to the, ultimately, the answer that I would say isn't necessarily in the same line as the other applicant, but research does show when you have a diverse member on a committee, you know, there's a deliberation that is different relative to that member who holds a diverse identity compared to the more homogeneous identities on our, on our board and commission. And so, again, this is a running theme, so that's why my first was, and I feel bad not necessarily knowing how to articulate the name, Shu Wan, but that's why I would, I would support his particular designation.
I'm comfortable with Pittson.
Yeah, so I think Pittson, we have four votes, don't we?
For Pittson?
Pittson.
Well, I don't know, you favored Pittson, Rockney?
Yeah.
John, you did? Susan, you do? All right, let's go with Pittson. Let me make sure I'm writing that down, but you make a very good point, Kingsley, and so we may get another opportunity on this. All right, the next is Housing and Community Development. We have three vacancies for full terms, three-year terms, and we have a list of applicants, 10 applications, 10 applicants.
Well, I would just note, I believe there's an error in this list.
Yeah, it should be nine.
Bill Brandt should not be in this list. His application is for planning and zoning.
That is correct, Susan.
I know. Yes.
No, I did not.
Bill Brandt should not be in this list. He's actually applied for planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, correct.
Well, my first one was Maria Padron. She's serving an unexpired term, and so lots of times when we have people who've filled a partial term, we do tend to give them an opportunity for a full term.
Sure, I agree.
That would be my, so that takes one female.
Or one nun.
Or one nun, correct.
I agree.
Right, I like Maria also, again, because to fulfill her term, and the diversity again, she's Hispanic background.
I would, oh, go ahead.
I like Maria and Megan.
Sorry, you like who?
Megan Alter.
Megan Alter and Maria, yeah. Like us two women.
I support Megan Alter, too. I was gonna recommend her.
Yeah, those, I had those two.
Put a star by her name.
I was actually gonna support Jian Park, but I also like Megan Alter, so I'm not necessarily as...
I'm sorry, who was the other one you were gonna say?
Jian Park.
No, no, it's not on my list.
Park?
She was on one of these, yeah. Maybe, she must have been on another. She was for HCDC, wasn't she? Or was that Human Rights Commission?
She was on Human Rights.
Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, Human Rights, there she is.
I'm right, put in my place.
One of the millions.
I think...
Then I had David Smith as my other one.
I like Deputy Smith, too.
I liked Faridish, Faridig.
What did you say again?
Jessica Faridig.
Wait a minute, we have two women now.
We have two women already.
We need one man.
We have Maria Padron, we have Megan Alter.
Well, but we can have one female, one male, and one nun, or, you know.
Right, so we can only have two females.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna change that. We're gonna get the females and the males appointed and then leave the nuns. It's too difficult.
It is too difficult. Please change it.
Okay, so if we've got Maria Padron, and then do we have four that want Megan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, so that takes care of our female and our nun, so I had David Smith down as the male.
I have Bijou Balabo. Make sure I'm doing that right.
Isn't Bijou for human rights? Or was I missing something?
Bijou was also human rights.
Golly!
It's also human rights.
Well, it says, it says Housing Development right here.
Bijou for more idea.
Oh, man, okay, I do have my list messed up.
Did you say Balabo?
David Smith.
Oh.
David Smith.
Both, yeah, both the males were good.
Mitch, is it Mitch Brousse?
Mitchell, Mitchell Brousse.
Yeah.
I just had concerns, he's a planner for Johnson County, if there would be like any conflict with that, but he had a good understanding of what the commission does.
I have some concerns about David Smith. I feel a bit awkward about those concerns. How do...
Well, I liked Mitchell, so I don't know if you have any concerns about Mitchell.
I don't have concerns about Mitchell.
I like Mitchell.
I like Mitchell, except for if there was any conflict.
David Smith, and I like Mitchell, too.
Okay.
When you talk about diversity, I thought David brought some characteristics to it that others don't.
Correct, no, I would agree. I mean, yeah, believe me, this was a, this was a tough one.
I want Mi, I like Mitch.
I prefer David.
How did I miss this out? Sorry, I'm looking at my notes.
Well, all right, I'm hearing lots of names being thrown around, so...
Yeah, so it's toss-up between Mitchell and David.
Brousse or Smith. Who else is being proposed? I mean, we've already got Padron and Alter, but in terms of...
Brousse or Smith for the male.
Brousse or Brews?
Yeah, I have Brousse as a possibility.
And David Smith.
David Smith is a possibility.
Yeah, there's only two.
All right, so Brousse or Smith, let's see. Well, you know, I'm, you know, not knowing any of them really personally, I'd go with Smith.
I think we have four votes for Brousse.
I don't know. Who's in favor of Brousse?
I am.
One, two, three, four. All right, that settles that.
So, we're onto Planning and Zoning.
Human Rights Commission, unless we want to defer that to our next meeting.
They gathered, didn't they?
Well, we just have one female, right?
Yeah.
So, I just left all the males off.
Yeah, I did, too. I didn't even look at them.
I didn't even look at the guy.
So, hold on for just a second. This is item 10G, Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill and unexpired term upon appointment. We have, what, 18 female applicants?
For one position.
I supported Jian, who, yeah, that's what I messed up on. Separate my list, I would agree.
Okay.
I think Jian is awesome. She's great, but I really like Bijou. I don't know if she, had the opportunity to talk with her. As I understand, she's a Congolese leader, incredibly articulate, passionate, very idea-oriented. Jian has a lot of terrific ideas, too, and I think she'll be able to serve in other capacities, but I was very impressed with Bijou.
I'd like to say, I know, of course, I know Jian as well, and I think very highly of her, but Bijou is phenomenal.
Yeah, that's right.
I think she has tremendous potential.
Yeah.
I don't know if you said this already, but she works at ACT. She's a translator. She's fluent in, I don't know, five languages, French, Arabic, Swahili, tribal language, which I can't remember the name of, and English.
No, that was one of those random phone calls to get on a commission that turned into a really good conversation, so I was...
This was a tough one.
She'll probably run for council someday, I mean, she's very impressive.
Their applications, they were also passionate about why they wanted to be on it and their knowledge of it. Jian is a wonderful person and would be good on it also, but Bijou reached out, obviously had called me, too, and she'd spoken to Stephanie Bowers about it, and so she, and she's Congolese. I think she'd be, she'd be good for it, too.
Oh.
I would go Bijou.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Let's go for it.
We have one more to go. 10H, Planning and Zoning Commission, we have two vacancies to fill, a five-year term, and four applicants, Larry Baker, Doug Boothroy, Billy Townsend, and Bill Brandt.
I like Billy Townsend and Larry Baker.
Me, too.
I strongly support Billy Townsend.
I would say Billy Townsend and Bill Brandt. Larry's been on it before. I think the idea, again, of getting new people on that haven't been on before.
Yeah, but that was four, 35, 40, almost 40 years ago.
Well, still giving new people an opportunity.
Of course, Billy would be wonderful on that, and I would be supporting Bill Brandt. I think, as you said, Larry, he's been there, done that, been on the council even, and because of that, may have even had some ties, which is why I had some concerns about Doug Boothroy. I applaud him for, in his retirement, wanting to do this, but I think he might be just a little too close to, to some of, like, the developers and things, so I'd say Bill Brandt and Billy Townsend.
I'm supportive of Billy. I had Larry as well, but I, I'm hearing some...
You don't make it for...
Where are we at for Larry, or Bill?
If you did, it would be four.
Oh, I'm supportive of Bill. I do, I do think, you know, I would agree with, you know, in general, it's a process for me, so I would generally say that I'd like to see new members on Planning and Zoning Commissions, and I'm supportive of his application.
Potential conflict of interest, let me see if this really is one. Bill Brandt has done electrical work at the house owned by my wife for 10 years now. You know, I talk to him once a year.
I don't know, it may be a conflict if you think it's bad.
How many are supporting Bill Brandt?
How many what?
Supporting Bill Brandt. One, two, three?
Oh, what? I thought I had four. I thought you just told me I had four.
I thought you said Bill Brandt.
How many are supporting...
Billy Townsend, who are we talking about?
Yeah, Billy Townsend.
Billy Townsend, for sure.
No, we're talking Bill Brandt. And Bill Brandt.
No, no, I'm Larry Baker.
Why did you say I had four?
All right, how many support Larry Baker?
Larry.
How many support Larry Baker?
I'd be curious why.
Yeah, why? Why?
Yeah, well, I think he has a lot of experience having to do with the issues that will be faced by the Planning and Zoning Commission, primarily, most recently, his service on the Board of Adjustment, and prior to that, two times being on the city council, but quite a long time ago, 20 and 30 years ago.
But I'd say be really interested to go back and look at the P&amp;Z appointments we've made since the last election, two years ago, and I think we've appointed a lot of people who don't, haven't had any experience on P&amp;Z and haven't had any experience in other things. I think this is an attachment to somebody that you know and not continuing with the things that have been said from that election of diversity and new people and giving other people opportunities.
I know, speaking for myself, I know all four of the individuals pretty well.
I just find it interesting, because I knew when Bill Brandt applied, there were a number of people said, there's no way this council will put Bill Brandt on the P&amp;Z.
Well, I mean, I like Larry, so, I mean, Larry, I know he watches, so don't take this personally. Don't write on my Facebook page.
No, he did to me, but I think, I think the opportunity of expanding...
He was talking about Billy, you know, Billy Townsend.
I think the opportunity of expanding who's on there, giving different people an opportunity, instead of recycling people, even if it has been a lot of years, and I think this goes, implies in the face of what people in this council have said about giving different people opportunities.
Right, I, yeah, let me, let me state some names here.
Are we gonna, quick question, Jim, before you go through, do we need to do these separately, or can we do them all together?
We can do them all at once.
I'm gonna vote no. I'll just, I'm gonna vote no, because I think the P&amp;Z is...
All right, so we, the motion would be to appoint Derek Liebry to the Airport Commission, Quentin Pittson to the Historic Preservation Commission for an at-large seat, Ellen Burford to the Commission for, for a College Green seat, Lee Shope to the Historic Preservation Commission for a Woodlawn seat, what's her name, Padron, Alter, and Brousse, B-R-O-U-S-E, to the Housing and Community Development Commission, Bijou Malibu to the Human Rights Commission, and Billy Townsend and Larry Baker to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Move.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Huh, no?
Yeah.
Motion carries 5-2. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have some vacancies. We have two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative on the Historic Preservation Commission, and two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Telecommunications Commission. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Community comment, item 12.
Hi, Gustav Stewart, UISG liaison. I'm gonna keep this short and sweet, because I know it's late and all that, but as you probably all know, commencement occurred last weekend. Over 4,000 undergraduate students and many graduate students graduated.
It's too bad Ben didn't make it.
Yeah. So, and after this weekend, I kind of reflected back on how, basically, that all of these students, they're going through, and they're spending several years in Iowa City, and Iowa City does have an impact on them, as well as the university has on the Iowa City community, that wherever they go, whether they're going somewhere else or they're staying in the area, that they're gonna have a little bit of Iowa City in them, just by being here for several years. So, yeah, that, what these decisions were making here make an impact on the students and vice versa, so, just a thought.
Fabulous. Thank you, Gustav. All right, item 13, City Council Information. I want to bring up one thing, and then I'm not gonna mention anything else on my list here, it's a pretty long list, but the Mayor's Innovation Project will be holding its annual meeting in Grand Rapids, Michigan, from August 22nd through 24th. I plan to attend, and I wonder if any one of you might like to join me? We are already members of the Mayor's Innovation Project, so there's no registration fee. There would be hotel accommodations and whatever travel's involved, and so, as I understand it, they're gonna discuss equitable economic development, creating healthy urban forests using smart city technology, and several other topics. I can tell you more about the Mayor's Innovation Project later on.
When'd you say it was?
August.
August 22nd through 24th. It's Wednesday through Friday.
Super interested?
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
I might be.
I might.
I might be, too.
Well, think about it, we don't have to, I think it's the 25th of May is like the deadline for applying and not having to pay some higher registration fee, but we don't have to pay registration fees, so...
Where?
Okay, so, let's see, where are we, where's it gonna start? Kingsley, you have anything you want to tell us?
Quick, Iowa Arena Fieldhouse groundbreaking tomorrow, Iowa City Shop Crawl on Friday, 30 Annual Inside Out fundraiser on the 19th, and then I'll be running in the Celebrity Mile for Get Moving for Healthy Kids on 20th. It's gonna be interesting.
Oh, I guess we went to the Juan grand opening. It was nice store, you forget that, good, so I can say it. I like the store, it's really, we can hear you, a lot of people came, great. That's on the 10th. I don't remember, but I have something. As a city council person, I spoke to Kirkwood Elementary School students, and, you know, just give them hope and, you know, encourage them to be at least a future leader. What else? Today was the city council, and tomorrow, we're gonna go to KSIC, right?
Yep.
In the morning. Besides, the rally was yesterday at the, for the, you know, Mount Pleasant, you know, sad situation going on right now in the city, and that's all.
Rockney?
Yes, following up on Mount Pleasant...
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ramadan will be tomorrow or after tomorrow, I don't know. Yes, to tell the view.
So, following up on Mount Pleasant, on May 11th, 2000, just this past Friday, I was in Postville, Iowa, to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Postville raids that occurred in 2008, and for those of you who don't know, that particular raid involved nearly 389 people detained, made felons within a week, and removed to the country of Guatemala without, with very little process afforded to them during that entire process. It devastated the community. They're just now starting to recover. One of the amazing things about Postville is a town of, you know, 2,000 people, that's one of the most diverse cities in the United States in terms of, for a town that size, and they'd really built an incredible community. It still is amazing, but they were essentially destroyed by the actions of the federal government on that particular day. And Mount Pleasant hung over those proceedings. Those of us who were involved in the original raid, in one way or another, were hopeful that this would never happen again, and we all promised ourselves that we would stand up and speak out and stop this from ever happening again. And Jim, to your point, you're absolutely correct, we have no legal authority to stop the federal government from executing federal law. They have the authority to do that, but I think it's very important in this day and age that we continue to speak out. We have First Amendment rights, and we can speak out and stand out and say that these raids are wrong, because one of the people that did stop the raid is a woman who's about five foot one, 75 years old, Sister Mary McCauley, and she was one of the key people that stopped that raid, because she had the moral authority to say no. And she was the one that provided shelter to the immigrants who were afraid, they were afraid of what was going on, and she did speak out, and she did make a difference, and so I think going forward, we as a council have very little legal authority to stop any of these raids, and we understand that. You know, one of the issues that's come up in the Johnson County Board of Supervisor Raids is this question of poking the bear. If we speak out, we might alienate the legislature, they may do even more things to us. Well, I think if there are raids that continue on, like Mount Pleasant, and that happens throughout the state of Iowa, because that's what those of us who were afraid in the Postville process, that this was merely a template, an operational template to be replicated across the United States, and that was what they were planning on doing, and I think that this is an operational template for what they are planning on doing throughout the United States. So, we may not have legal authority, but I think we must speak out and strongly condemn what happened as morally wrong, unacceptable, and we must always stand on the side of law, which is the United States Constitution. When people talk about law enforcement, that is the law, the United States Constitution. We have to ensure that those rights are honored. So, that's that. It was a very moving event. The good news is, is that as evil as those raids were in 2008, they brought together so many different walks of life to stand together, and so even though we are very sad by what had happened in Mount Pleasant, there was real power and energy there, and I think what Sister Mary McCauley said is, she concluded by saying that, "We're called to a summons. We're summoned to speak out and to act and not stay silent, because silence is complicity." And so I think I call upon all of you, and those of you who are listening, to answer Sister McCauley, Sister Mary McCauley's summons to speak out and stand up for our fellow human beings that deserve to be treated with basic respect. So, that's all for that. Under more prosaic matters, it is Bike to Work Week, or Month, and I'm biking today, and there's gonna be, I'm gonna be biking home after the meeting today, and there's gonna be an event tomorrow, May 16th, 5:30, it's the Co-op to Co-op Ride, so I encourage people to check that out. I think, I think it starts from the old new pine to the new new pine, but double-check that, and keep looking at that particular calendar for all those various events, because it's a terrific event for a guy like me that maybe needs to lose a few pounds, that biking's really important. What better way to lower your carbon footprint, get some exercise, build some community than biking to work? So, I encourage everyone to check that out.
Nothing from me.
Nothing.
I'm not gonna say anything else. Jeff?
Oh, you missed me. And I had a few things to say. I think, a lot, a lot's been happening in the last few weeks, I'll try to be quick, though. Early on in the month, obviously, a lot of us were there at the groundbreaking for Augusta Place, that was on May 3rd. May 6th with the garden party at Wetherby, it was a nice event, and not really well-attended, but Grow Johnson County and Global Foods, we give thanks to them, they had some wonderful food, and even the kids got excited about planting. Grow Johnson gave you a big planter and a choice of a pepper or tomato plant. Let's see, you mentioned Joanne's Fabric already on the 10th, and I was just happy to see the marketplace and things going to the marketplace. That's a really great thing. Talking about the Bike to Work Week, I participated yesterday in the Bike, Bus, Car Race Challenge.
How'd that go?
The bikes won, but the bus driver, bus driver Mike, he had to, he made, it was a regular bus, that made the regular stop outside of the Corvale Library, so he was on his regular route, so he had to continue to make stops. He made six or seven stops along the way, and the bikes could just keep going, although they say we made it in record time, from the Corvale Library to Iowa City Library in only 17 minutes, so that's pretty good time, just goes to show that you can ride the transit system and still get to where you want to go, so, so that was fun. Let's see here. Oh, it's Saturday evening, the Senior Center went to a wonderful event, the Folk Machine Concert. If folks have never seen the Folk Machine, you've got to look for their next concert, it was with Inglard, it's a wonderful group of older folks, down to the youngest, who are like five or six years old, up to like 70 or 80 years old, and just a really fun event with some folk music, and that was really fun. This Saturday, May 19th, there's a minimum wage discussion at CWJ, isn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, we're gonna postpone it.
Oh, okay, well, scratch that, then. Scratch that, it was gonna be a great event. And last but not least, just congrats to all the recent U of I grads, including my daughter, and best wishes to all of them for their future, and hope that that might include staying in Iowa City. And just on a side note, I noticed as they were announcing the master's graduate, there was a boatload of urban and regional planning graduates, so they're gonna be out there and helping to plan the community, so that was, that was great to see.
Two important things you said there. I agree with, congratulations to your daughter.
Yes.
I don't agree with a car ever beating a bike.
Yeah.
Not possible.
All right, all right, moving along. Jeff, you said no.
Nothing.
Ashley?
15 seconds.
Yeah.
We met with the Climate Action Clinton Steering Committee this morning. Long meeting, productive, and look for us ramping up communications about the plan and getting everybody excited about the community meeting on the 11th of July. And then the other two things, more going on at the Senior Center, but these are intergenerational events, so teens to adults. There's a trivia night, starts at 5:00 on Thursday, the 17th, and then the Come As You Are Iowa City Pride is holding like a dance party at 8:00 on Friday, and it's free.
That was a liberal 15 seconds.
I see.
Good information.
I tried.
Eleanor, 15 seconds? No? Kelly? All right, I think that means we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Saleh, seconded by Botchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.